Good evening. I call to order the special meeting of the Lakewood City Council on November 4th, 2024 at 7:01 PM. To connect with the council meeting this evening online, you can do so at one of the following links, LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any links to LakewoodSpeaks.org, an online forum for public comments. We will be leaving that open online through 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. Anyone who would like to address the city will be given the opportunity this evening a couple of, well, a few different times throughout the night depending on what it is that you're here to speak to. And with that, if we'll get started, Mr. Clerk, will you please read, please call the roll?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselor's over.
Here.
May Alguero.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Shar Azai.
Here.
LeBure.
Here.
Nyström.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Anne Sinks.
Here.
Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And I ask for those of you who are able to stand, please do so and join us this evening for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing afterwards for a moment of silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2 Prince B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2 Prince B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. So next Monday night, we will not be meeting. It is a holiday next week. And for us to kick off our meeting this evening, I wanted to take a moment to honor those who next Monday is set aside to observe. And with that, we do have a proclamation this evening for, well, we've honoring our veterans and reservists. Sorry, it's been a long day this evening. And Counselor Nyström will be helping me tonight read a proclamation. And we will be reading that for and handing that over to Jerry Hilton and Diane Duffy of the Lakewood Elks Lodge. So I'll meet you two down here down front. And Counselor Nyström will read it to us. You good? Okay.
All right. Proclamation, veteran and reservist appreciation. Whereas, we owe a great debt to those who have served in defense of this nation to ensure that our democracy and the ideals of freedom and liberty are preserved. And whereas, we are pleased and honored to recognize today the dedicated veterans and reservists who are both our community members and our employees. And whereas, we wish to express our gratitude, appreciation, and respect for these men and women of the armed forces who enlist in times of peace and war and who serve with honor under the most difficult circumstances and make sacrifices that many of us cannot begin to imagine. And whereas, in the light of Veterans Day, this is also an opportunity to pay tribute to our veterans who continue to serve our community in many ways, including as police officers, public servants, business owners, coaches, mentors, and in many other capacities that allow them to portray and share the timeless American ideals that they serve to protect. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim veterans and reservists appreciation.
Supprified.
Well, we're a social club that have lots of fun, but our foundation is charity. And right now, our charity committee, we have almost 20 members on it. We've got three low-income apartment houses where we assist over 70 veterans in helping them with their needs. We buy them beds, we give them welcome home packs if they're coming off the streets, we do a Christmas dinner for all of them. So we're really tied into making veterans aware that we're, somebody's there to take care of them because many of them don't know that's available. And so that's what we pride ourselves in. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. A huge thank you to you, Jerry and Diane, and the Elks Lodge for everything that you do to support our veterans. It means a lot. And for those of you in the audience that may be interested in supporting that they work that they do, we know we have some holiday dinner serving coming up. Now you know who to reach out to, to get involved. And for everybody in the audience and watching us online this evening who has served and/or who is a family member who has served, we know you two have sacrificed a lot for them to be over there doing that, protecting our freedom and democracy as a whole. So thank you both for joining us this evening and for all of your work. So we have changed up the role or the steps within our agenda this evening. For those of you who may not have joined us over the last few months, tonight will look a little bit different. And so I'll give you a little bit of an idea as to what to expect. What we have done is split up. So we will have public comment this evening in three different places. We have one agenda item that will be accompanied with public comment, and then we have two non-agenda item spaces in our meeting this evening. The first non-agenda public item is limited to 10 people. And those are to speak about items that are not on the agenda. So if you are here tonight to speak specifically to item number 10, we would ask for you to wait until that time. What we will do is get us all started with that, 10 people, up to 10 people will be able to speak for that general non-agended public comment. It's kind of a tongue twister. And then we will move on to our consent agenda, our agenda item. We will get public comment on that ordinance. It is our agenda item. And then we will, well, we're not really closing the meeting, but we will do our second portion of non-agended public comment in the latter time. I will explain this as we go. So anyway, we, the goal of public comment, I want to take just a minute to impress upon, is really to create an environment that welcomes all stakeholders, to share their thoughts and concerns. Whether your comments are left on Lakewood Speaks, I know some of you in the audience have probably already made comments on Lakewood Speaks, or some of you that are listening virtually, we do ask that those comments, whether on Lakewood Speaks or here in chambers, do maintain a level of respect, understanding that people sitting near you, these are your neighbors, these are our community members. So we want to really speak to the issue and not necessarily get in arguments with other people. So along that same vein too, I will ask that we maintain the respect, the decorum of this chambers, no audible applause, discord, that. We want to make sure that everybody hears everything. We are here to listen to you. This is a listening session only for your city council. It will not be a back and forth exchange. So if you do have questions for your counselors or for staff members, those are something you can reach out by phone or email. We're happy to help you out with that. But for tonight, we will be in listen-only mode. If you have something that you would like to present to, a piece of paper that you wanted to present to your council members, you can leave that with the city clerk and he will distribute that to us after tonight's meeting. For anyone that has left meetings or left comments on Lakewood Speaks, to let you know that those are included with the official minutes of the meeting, verbatim, that doesn't happen when you're here in chambers, it is summarized. So when you put a comment up on Lakewood Speaks that is verbatim included with the meeting record, I will, tonight, we do have a lot of public comment that has occurred online. We were at or over 40 on Lakewood Speaks this evening. We've obviously got a number of you in the room. So what we will be doing in chambers, when you come into city council chambers to speak on public comment, we have one time. So you come up one time, you speak one time. The intention is really to have that also carry over to Lakewood Speaks, but that's never really been something that we've enforced. We're not going to start doing that tonight. But I will be calling people that have not made comments on Lakewood Speaks first so that they can speak. If you have done something on Lakewood Speaks already and you feel very compelled, you do want to come up again, we will let you, we'll honor that ability to do it this evening, but you will go in the latter part of the evening. So for those that may be here for the very first time, what we'll do is I will call names, welcome you to the front, we'll ask you to get started, kick us off by stating your name and address or your name and ward, and then we'll start your, the clock for three minutes. You'll get three minutes to speak. And I think that is all I have to say about that. So we'll go ahead with that and open up our non-agended public comment. And for that, we have two people. First one, P. Key. P. Key. Mr. Keys. You're number one. Okay, thank you. Mr. Keys, then we have Bradley Bruce, number two. And if you want to join in the middle, and that should already be on for you. There you go.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking to save Delmar Park. As the city of Lakewood has sanctioned to save Bear Creek Lake Park. So somehow or other, the city of Lakewood needs to figure out some other way to save this incredible, incredible park. We don't need any more buildings. We probably have buildings they don't even have, whatever. So I'm just standing here saying to you, you need to try to do something else to save Delmar Pike, just like you have stand behind saving Bear Creek Lake Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce.
Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. I live in War II. I am here to ask the Lakewood City Council to pass a resolution condemning the use of American weapons in Palestine and Lebanon. In the last month, the Israeli war machine has used American weapons and American tax dollars to enact an accelerated ethnic cleansing of the northern Gazprom Strip. Over 1,300 people have been killed in the last four weeks. Most of those have been women and children. This brings the total number of confirmed Palestinians that Israel has killed throughout, since October of 2023, to well over 43,000. At the same time, Israel has continued its bombardment of Lebanon, where the death toll has reached 3,000 as of today. This increased aggression in northern Gaza has been accompanied by continued killing and starvation in southern Gaza, the occupied West Bank, Lebanon, and now Syria. This includes continued strikes against civilians and UN forces in Lebanon, medical workers in Syria, and the killings of farmers in the West Bank attempting to harvest this year's olive crop. The United States has financed over 70% of Israel's genocide of the Palestinian people. Almost 23 billion tax dollars have been sent to Israel just in the last year. As I always say, I do not expect the city council to fix international issues, but the horrors enacted by the Israeli government are only possible because of our tax dollars are being siphoned out of our community and put towards the financing of killing random people on the opposite side of the planet. Every single tax dollar spent on weapons and munitions is a tax dollar not spent on improving the lives of your constituents. These are weapons and munitions produced right here on the front range. These issues are closer to our community than we realize. We should be putting our tax dollars towards better schools, infrastructure, maybe more parks, or literally anything else to improve the lives of Lakewood residents. While you have constituents sleeping on the streets, I would expect you all to be exploring any funding sources to ensure your constituents don't suffer, including pushing our federal representatives to divest from the American and Israeli war machine. We are funding a genocide while Americans at home suffer. Not only are Americans at home suffering, but the Biden administration has deployed active-duty American troops to Israel. In honors of Veterans Day, I hope that you push this resolution to ensure that our soldiers come home safe before a regional war breaks out. I do not want to see Americans return home in body bags like they did during our invasion and occupation of Iraq and Afghanistan. Tonight, it will be important to remember that while we discuss how land should be allocated for park use in our community, our federal government has used our tax dollars to build bombs right here on the front range and then use those bombs to destroy every hospital, university, and school in Gaza. Over 70% of residential buildings have been leveled, and obviously, all of their parks are gone. It is obvious that our federal representatives do not care about this issue. Both of the presidential candidates, that one of which will be elected tomorrow, do not care and will continue to fund Israel to their hearts' content. We must force them to care about these issues, and I hope that you will help force them by using your combined and amplified voice by passing a resolution condemning the use of American weapons in Palestine and Lebanon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Okay, and that's it for who we have signed up for non-agended public comment, number one. So with that, we'll move on to our, we've got one more that would like to speak. If you'll come up here, why don't you go ahead and speak, and then we'll have you sign up.
Perfect, thanks, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Randy Little. I'm one of the new directors of the Green Mountain Water Board and Sanitation District. Been there about four months now. And I just want to remind everybody, please, it's that time of the year to turn off your sprinkler systems, you know, drain out all your pipes. Water is a precious commodity, and we have a lot of development coming up in the next years that, you know, we need to preserve what we have. So I just wanted to introduce myself to the council and say thank you for everything you do. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Excuse me, Ward 4, 1059 West Dakota Avenue in Lakewood.
Thank you. Mr. Little, if you'll sign in with Ms. Salazar. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, it was gone.
Oh, you're fine. Anybody else that would like to speak on our initial non-agended public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close that and move on to the consent agenda. City council, do we have any items that we would like to request removed this evening from the consent agenda? Okay. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda consists of the following items. Item seven, Ordinance O-2024-30, amending titles 12 and 14 of the Lakewood Municipal Code regarding permits, revocable license agreements, and acceptance of public improvements or interests in real property. Item eight, Ordinance O-2024-31, Chapter 2.54 code changes from Campaign Finance Ad Hoc Committee. Item nine, Ordinance O-2024-32, to rezone land located at 8600 West Dakota Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado 80226, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you. And because of the nature of the three items that are on the consent agenda this evening, they're all first reading ordinances, where we don't do a public hearing, that is simply to announce that they will be posted publicly. So with that, we won't have public comment tonight aligned directly with the consent agenda. So we'll move on, and may I please have a motion?
Mayor Strom, I move to order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, thank you. And any, do I have a hand up? Counselor Cruz, no?
No.
Okay. Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and cast our votes. And that passes 11 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read item 10 into the record?
Item 10, second reading and public hearing on Ordinance O-2024-28, repealing and replacing Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter 14.16, with citizen-initiated ordinance pertaining to park and open space dedication.
Mr. Robb, I think you had a brief presentation for us before we...
Thank you, mayor. Just quickly, as council knows, you know, we've finally come to the crossroads that you've been hearing about and receiving updates from me over the last six weeks. And that crossroads comes down to one of two actions that the council must take this evening. In response to the citizens' initiative, the decision point for council is to either adopt the ordinance 2024-28, repealing and replacing the Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter 14.16, with a citizen-initiated ordinance, or adopt the resolution under item 11, calling for a special election, whoops, excuse me, calling for a special election for Lakewood voters to approve or deny the citizens' initiated ordinance regarding parks' open space dedication. So very brief summary of kind of where we are in the meeting and the discussion and the decision the council needs to debate. So with that, I will just defer back to you, Mayor Strom, and see which direction you want to take this, either initial questions from staff or discussion amongst council or public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will start with public comment on the topic this evening. One point I did want to make clear, Mr. Robb read the, what it is that we're doing this evening. So public comment, as has been coming in with Lakewood Speaks, one of the gifts we have is we get to see a few days in advance what kind of questions and comments that people have. There have been comments kind of all over the board, and I want to make very clear what we are talking about tonight. City council, sitting in front of you, has two choices. Our choices are, one, this ordinance gets adopted as it is, city council passes it, then it becomes in effect in 30-plus days. The second option is to send this to the voters, who then decide if that's what they want to adopt. There have been some questions about, you know, rejecting it or adding amendments to it, for example, including some affordable housing elements, things like that. That is not within the scope of things that we can discuss this evening. That's not part of our decision-making at this time. So just to make sure that everybody understands what you're speaking to, it is either council passes it as is and/or council sends it to the electorate of the city of Lakewood. passes it as is and/or council sends it to the electorate of the City of Lakewood to vote on themselves. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up public comment this evening. And the first that I have signed up, and again, we're going through people who have not submitted comments previously on Lakewood Speaks first. The first I have here is David Thormsgard, then Brian Rena, and then Kinley Brunsdale.
Hello, City Council. My name is David Thormsgard. I'm a member of Ward One. It's exciting being here so close to Halloween. I didn't realize that we would have a zombie in the presence of us, like the SGI risen from the grave, right? Because let's all be real, that's what this really is. This is an attempt to kill development disguised as a plea for our open space, right? And it is something that we might want to do when we see developments like 777 South Yarrow Street, what might be planned there, but they're not all that scary, right? Like, we could look at the old Brunswick Zone property on Mississippi and Wadsworth. That's three acres of just concrete that's just sitting there, right? In the prime area, that could be a new apartment building or a new senior center where people could live without the burdens of increasing property taxes and maintenance costs on their homes, right? But instead, it'll just stay concrete, and I think that's a missed opportunity. Development isn't always good. It's not always bad, but it is always challenging in Lakewood. You can just look at the half-finished apartments on 13 some Wadsworth to see that. And I don't know if the petitioners really know what they were going for. They want these developers to turn concrete pads into parks? I don't think that's really feasible when instead the city staff could ask for a fee that they can then save up and use to actually invest in our parks and in our community, right? This is what the city staff has been asking developers to do. This is their mechanism, and we're going to take that away? I don't think it's very well thought out, right? And so I ask you guys to make like a skeleton and give the LAC a bone and maybe have them look into an updated fee in lieu that actually could better serve the interests of everyone, right? It could help us turn these old delinquent properties into new wonderful spaces where our future children and grandchildren could potentially live or enjoy, right, in the City of Lakewood. And so that's what I'd really like to see happen out of this is a new and updated thing that we can actually use well. So thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Thormsgard. Brian Rena.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your time. My name's Brian Rena, and I live at Morrison Road in Kipling. We know that Lakewood residents have consistently voted to keep our city from becoming Denver. These are your constituents. If you begin taking our open lands and putting up a Burger King, a storage facility, apartments, or townhomes, we won't get these lands back. You do not hear about structures being torn down and replaced with open space. I've read where some are arguing that these open spaces can be used to add affordable housing. While I'm sympathetic to the cause, unfortunately, and I'm going to say this, I'm going to say what no one else wants to say, is that we know that these precious lands are typically next to homes, and no one wants to sacrifice their property values. I encourage the council to respect the wishes of the voters and save our open spaces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rena. Kinley Brunsdale.
Kinley Brunsdale, Ward Four. In looking at Lakewood Speaks, we noticed some opposition documents and memorandums and letters that have been posted there, so I want to speak to some of that opposition in advance. Some of that comes from the Affordable Housing Group. And I simply want to start by pointing out that for 13 years, there's been a buyout to avoid having to dedicate open space. And for 13 years, we've watched these big block, high-density, sidewalk-to-sidewalk apartments going up everywhere. And there hasn't been very much affordable housing that's happened along with that. So I'm suggesting that the open space requirement has very little to do with the amount of affordable housing. Developers don't dedicate open space or build affordable housing out of the goodness of their heart. They do it when they're required to do it, based on city interests and city needs and city plans. And so they don't necessarily have to be in conflict. They are not a zero-sum game. If affordable housing is appropriate and needed in a place, the city can take steps and actions to make it happen. So the second point I want to make is that, yes, a complaint is made that this requirement or this ordinance would have a retroactive effect on an existing application, and that somehow that's in violation of law or not fair. I want to point out that the Colorado statute that they refer to in that argument has a very important exception. And that exception says that that grandfather rule does not apply where you're dealing with a resource that is important to the preservation of public health. The preamble to the initiative spells out very clearly that a big reason behind this, behind this open space need, is to catch up for 13 years of massive development without any open space being added, to try to correct that balance while there's still time because of its connection to the public health. In the preamble of the initiative, it spells that out clearly. There's 8,000 residents of Lakewood that have signed and declared and attested that it's important to their health. And if that's not enough, I suggest that you could do a survey on any Sunday morning over at Belmar Park and ask each person coming by if that park is important to their health, and you would have a very high percentage score. So the arguments for affordable housing or for this grandfather idea that because the application got in under the door before, both of them are... They are not effective arguments against approval and going forward with the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol McCoy, then Barbara Millman, then Brenda Lee Connors.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Carol McCoy, and I live in Ward Four. I'm speaking before you in support of the citizen initiative for the ordinance to protect open space and public land in the City of Lakewood to expand that category. And I urge you to adopt the citizen ordinance. So I have four brief points. The first is that this ordinance addresses the bias that has been applied by the city in favor of intensive development for over 10 years. In that time period, we really have seen a transformation of the city and the feel of the city. And during this period, the city has not even once required developers to abide by the city's open space sedicide requirement in the code. Instead, it has fallen back on allowing developers to pay a fee instead. This ordinance helps to promote open space and green space, spaces in the city which are important for people and wildlife. The literature is replete with studies about the importance of nature, of natural and green spaces to our mental and physical health. Building wall-to-wall apartment complexes right up against sidewalks with no green space is not good for the people that will occupy those buildings and/or for the residents of Lakewood. And when the petition was being circulated, a number of people who do live in those apartment buildings that already exist in the city did voice support for having more open space, saying, boy, it would have been nice if there had been more green space associated with our building. So and then my third point is that this ordinance is not anti-development. It doesn't preclude development from going forward. It instead is asking for a balance. And you really see, when you drive around Lakewood and you see the older buildings when the code was different, set back further, there's a real different feel in the city. And as was just mentioned, this ordinance, as it is framed, because it does emphasize the importance of public health, it does fall within the exception under state law. So thank you, and I hope you will adopt this ordinance.
Thank you. Barbara Millman.
Mayor Strom, councilors, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Barbara Millman, a 30-year resident of Ward Two. There are great visionaries and pioneers who have much to say about the lands we are addressing tonight. Unfortunately, they couldn't make it here, so I will quote them. "You don't live on earth; you are passing through it." Rumi, who lived in the 13th century. "Earth provides enough to satisfy every man's needs, but not every man's greed." "We won't have a society if we destroy the environment." Margaret Mead. And lastly, "It is horrifying that we have to fight our own government to save the environment." Ansel Adams.
Thank you. Brenda Lee Connors.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Brenda Lee Connors. I'm with Metro West Housing Solution. We are the city's housing authority, and I'm here to speak about this initiative from the perspective of the housing authority and affordable housing provider, actually the main affordable housing provider in the City of Lakewood. First off, I'd like to comment on the effect that this would have on us as developers of affordable housing. I'll just do that by way of an example. So in the consent agenda, you heard that we are looking forward to rezoning a parcel of land. On that, we're hoping to build some senior housing. And the parcel's about two acres. If this were to pass and we were to build 40 units on the parcel, we would have to dedicate 29% of the parcel to the city for parkland. So that would leave us less land into which to fit a building, parking, fire access, water detention, and 30% open space. The zoning that we're going under also requires open space on the property. So for us, it becomes a bit of a game of numbers. We can't fit 40 units, and so we'd have to build less. But we can't build less because we can't afford to build less with the costs of building. So after a while, it does become an inability to develop. This would be a really difficult ordinance for us. Some people have pointed out the factors that possibly are making this illegal. I also wanted to talk about the fee in lieu. We have definitely paid fees in lieu, and we, our residents, have benefited from that because improvements have been made to parks that are close to our properties. For example, at Carmody Park, a new splash pad was added, and we have a property about two blocks from Carmody Park. At Mount Air Park, lighting was added. We have a property a few blocks away where our residents go to the park and enjoy that. At Ray Ross Park, a new shelter was added. We have a property about three blocks from there where our residents can go and use the shelter. These things are paid for by the fee in lieu rather than having a park at every single one of our properties. I also want to recognize the tough position I think you, as council members, are in in needing to either pass or forward this to the residents. I just would ask that, assuming this passes, as soon as possible, try to do what you can to make this workable for affordable housing, because as written, I don't find it workable. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Hamilton. Then we have Tim Kratz, maybe? I apologize, not reading that real clear. On Custer Avenue, and then Linda Stott.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Gail Hamilton. I live in Ward Three. And regarding item 10, I'm for the ordinance 02024-28 on park and open space land dedication. All developers and owners want to maximize the number of units on a site. The more, the better. This gives them a much higher income and return on their investment. All of the properties in Lakewood should not be considered the same as the properties located near the light rail stations, meaning that they are devoid of green and open space due to the location by mass transit, and it may be considered an urban location. It's a concrete jungle. This means high density, meaning the number of units for the lot size is high, buildings are higher stories with less parking required, and little to no green or open space. This is where the improved area is almost lot line to lot line, and many mature trees are removed to maximize the number of units. In Jefferson County, in the last 10 years, with multifamily construction, larger and higher complexes have been built, but especially in the City of Lakewood in 2023 and 24. Now, it's more common to see more than four or five stories, even eight stories, in Lakewood with almost no open or green space. We don't want to see 70, 80, or 90 units per acre of land. We've had over 12 years of no park and open space dedication, and this is happening on your watch. While the planning department has internally decided to always let developers buy their way out of Lakewood's ordinances regarding land dedication, which is based on Lakewood's current density calculation, developers can circumvent dedicating any land at all for park and open space. It should never be all fees with no land dedicated. Maybe in the future, Lakewood could require that the developers increase their onsite green and open space requirement, and the building owners and managers could maintain it for the benefit of the residents. Imagine that. Keep in mind that this is not limited to affordable housing. It's all properties. Comments from owners, managers, developers, which include the City of Lakewood, will be against this citizen-led ordinance because it's a conflict of interest. We urge you to listen to your individual citizens and constituents. We also urge you to have the election in January to avoid the holidays and get more participation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
City Council, Mayor, thanks for having me up here. I just want to talk about the positive impacts of preserving Belmar Park. Belmar Park acts as a natural filter for the community with mature trees.
Mr. Kurtz, I'm sorry. This is actually about an ordinance that's not directly aligned with Belmar Park. If you wanted to speak specifically to that development, I would invite you to join us for the non-agenda public comment in the latter part. After we get through this ordinance, we're going to have that one.
Okay, gotcha.
So with your permission, I'll switch you over to that.
Thank you.
Does that work? Okay. Then Linda Stott.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us tonight. I'm here to support the passage by yourselves of the ordinance repealing and replacing Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter 4.16, with the citizen... Municipal Code, Chapter 4.16, with the citizen-initiated ordinance pertaining to park and open space dedication. The people have spoken. 8,000 people have signed that petition. The people who live in Lakewood love to live in Lakewood because we have so much open space. And if we continue to allow developers to come in here and build right up to the sidewalk, that's going to go, and it's going to take away many things that have already been mentioned so far today. Public health, it's essential for us to have green space around us. This is not an anti-development measure at all. The person who spoke was saying something about the, having cement staying there because of this. That's not at all the case. Actually, we would hope that part of the open space would be those cement pieces and have them become open space. We need to pass this now. The developers cannot continue to do what they're doing here. This is our precious land. We love it. All of us who live here love it. I'm on the advisory committee for the Envision Lakewood, the comprehensive plan for 2040. And over and over again, I'm on the Quality of Life Advisory Group, everyone says they need to have green spaces around them. This is going to give that space. It's going to give, it's going to ensure that the developers provide that to the people that live in those buildings that are built by the developers and those that live around them is going to ensure that we continue to have the spaces that make our city so beautiful. So, I urge you to pass this tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kathy Kentner with Poold Time, 10 minutes. And then after Ms. Kentner, we've got Tom Durth, also with Poold Time, for 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kathy Kentner, and during the signature gathering process, I was one of the two legal representatives of this petition, a job which now transfers mostly to all of you. Tonight, you are making the decision whether to pass this initiative or send it to the voters. Either way you vote, I am asking that we agree to speak respectfully and factually about this initiative, the dozens of volunteers who gathered signatures, and the thousands of people who signed the petition. Already, I have heard many fear-based statements. I'm hopeful that we will stay away from fear and keep our comments fair. Many, let me explain. Fear, false evidence appearing real. Much of the fear is all or nothing blanket statements that sound good but have no basis in reality and no facts to back them up. Others amount to name-calling and are mean-spirited personal attacks. Some fear-based statements that we have already heard. This threatens affordable housing development. It creates another barrier to affordable housing, limits climate-friendly development, cuts off a critical funding source for parks. It's unlawful. It's designed to keep multifamily development out of the city and aimed at keeping Lakewood exclusive. And lastly, this would drive up housing costs for all Lakewood residents and exacerbate the middle and workforce housing shortage. No numbers to back it up. Some fair statements that we could make. Factual assessments, including residents. This initiative will take away administration discretion. No longer will administrator sitting behind closed doors be allowed to determine that accepting fees instead of providing parks and open space will, quote, "serve the public interest" without any community input. This initiative will eliminate the discretion now given. It will control density while still allowing for reasonable multifamily development. Despite what others say, this initiative will increase parks and open space at no cost to the city. This initiative will create pocket parks, which, despite what you may have heard, do not cost any more in staff time to maintain than three-acre and larger parks. This initiative will positively impact Belmar Park, a crown jewel of Lakewood where people are rightfully concerned about the silent spring that could occur should the proposed development proceed. This initiative will slow the spread of the concrete jungle on West Colfax, where the urban heat island effect and development without green space has already exacerbated our greenhouse gas emissions. This initiative could stop the creation of a food desert at Colfax and Quail, where 850 units are planned to replace the one grocery store in the neighborhood. This initiative does reduce greenhouse gas emissions and increase sustainability by slowing the crescendo of and reducing the urban heat island effect caused by the creation of more and more impervious areas. These facts directly contradict the Yimby Law fear statement that this initiative limits efficient and climate-friendly development. Hmm, Yimby Law, a name implying that the proponents of this initiative are nimby's. The fact is that we are in favor of responsible, smart, sustainable development. Opposition to this initiative comes mainly from out-of-state, big-money developers who use fear to reduce our quality of life and destroy our natural environment just so they can make a profit. This is an initiative that addresses parkland dedication and does not impact affordable housing. I don't think you could see the 850 unit there. This initiative recognizes the concept of environmental justice and the fact that lower-income households deserve parks and open spaces and clean air to breathe. Myself and many others who gathered signatures have been and continue to be vocal opponents of inclusionary zoning, an actual ordinance that could be passed that would provide more affordable housing. There is absolutely no evidence that overbuilding market-rate luxury apartments that are unaffordable to the majority of people who live in Lakewood has an impact on affordability. In fact, there's much evidence that rents are set based on what the market will bear, and overbuilding does not reduce rents. Even worse, rents are sometimes set through landlord collusion. There is evidence that we are already overbuilding market-rate, high-density apartments. And there is evidence that building high-density, high-density luxury apartments has already caused gentrification and displacement of longtime Lakewood residents. This is an initiative that addresses parkland dedication and the current practice of exempting or paying fees instead of following requirements. Without this initiative, the practice of providing corporate welfare to developers without getting anything in return will continue. Land dedication, exaction, and impact fees have long histories of being allowed. There's nothing unlawful about them. And the notion that a project receives vested rights at the time of application is easily refuted. The cost of a special election is minimal in comparison to the developer welfare that has been handed out in recent years. And there really is only one reason that grassroots initiatives like this exist and cause a special election: unresponsive elected officials. When passed, this initiative will subject every residential property to the long-time standard of providing 10.5 acres of parkland for every anticipated 1,000 people added. This initiative will not cut off a funding source for park maintenance because money collected for parkland dedications cannot be used for ongoing maintenance of parks. This initiative will save the city money by increasing the stock of parks and open space at no cost to the city. Thank you ahead of time for making only fair statements and staying away from blanket statements that, if you didn't know it before, you now know amount to nothing but fear, false evidence appearing real. Through this petition, the people have spoken clearly. Stop the practice of fee in lieu. Pass this initiative and honor it. Sustainability and environmental stewardship should not just be words to get you elected, as should representing your constituents, the people who elected you to office. These should be a way of life. Passing this initiative is a good start. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please, please. Mr. Tom Durth.
Mayor Strom and Council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak here. Glad we live in a free country where we can do this. And I'm here to speak about the open space. And one of the things I would do is, if I were to name my talk tonight, it would be "The Pulse of the City." And basically, what I want to do is, I want to talk a little bit about what happened during the collection of signatures for this petition. It's the first time I've ever done anything like that, and I was really amazed at what it took, because it takes a long time to collect those signatures, 9,000 signatures, so we could end up with 6,000 that were approved. And there were a lot of people that did an amazing amount of work to do that. And the amount of time that it took to do that was, the surprising thing for me, is I thought for sure the longest time was going to be to find people, explain what the process was all about, and that sort of thing. It wasn't hard to find people. All I had to do was stand in front of the Belmar Library, and people were almost lining up to sign up for this. And it, explaining the situation, explaining it was, you really want people to know what they're signing. I mean, people were ready to sign. I said, "Wait a minute, you can't sign this until we tell you what it's all about." And then we would explain that to people before they would sign, because I certainly don't want to just go up and sign something because it sounds good. But the thing that took the longest was people wanted to tell us their story. People wanted to say, "Thank God, somebody's finally doing something like this. Have you been down Colfax to see what those buildings look like?" I've had people explain those things looking like Russian prisons. These buildings are just building upon building upon, block is blocks of wood, concrete, a few balconies sticking out now and then, but for the most part, it's concrete to concrete. No trees, no greenery, no park benches, no grass, nothing that makes you feel like you're in a neighborhood. I had people explain it to me, saying, "Lakewood is beginning to look like a little mini Manhattan." Now, those people have Central Park. We've got beautiful parks around, but even those are in danger right now. So, these are not my words. I want, I really want you to know what we experienced as we were collecting those signatures. People were saying, "Yep, city's owned by the developers." Now, you and I all know that's not true. The problem is, that's the perception of the people who are out there. That's the perception of the people we were talking to. That's the perception of the people that wanted to tell us their feelings about what's going on right now with these cinder blocks going up, filling up every single space, going higher, blocking views, and destroying the environment. And it was brought up earlier about how this is destroying the environment with gases and oil. You just named it. There were a lot of comments about 777, but I think a lot of those, the number of comments that I got on that was because I was at the Belmar Library. I will give you that. But there were a huge number of comments about how that's going to destroy, that it's going to look like, like West Colfax at the side of a park. No greenery and that sort of thing, Little Manhattan. I got some other ideas that people came up with, but I have to eliminate a lot of, I'll delete the expletives. We heard a lot of those sort of words out there that I was kind of thought, "Ooh, wait a minute, that's not what this is all about." But the whole idea is, people are really upset. They're really unhappy about what's going on right now because they feel like the developments are being pushed down their throat. Boom, there's another big building. Boom, there's another, you know, cement block going up over there. If I were to summarize the feelings that I thought these people were expressing, there was anger. There was frustration. There was a sense of helplessness. It was like, "Can't anybody help us with this?" It's like, things are just happening, and we don't even know it's happening, and it's going up, and bing, there's another construction happening. Those are the words that we heard. And I could, we could go on with anybody else who collected the signatures, who put their time and effort into that, hours and hours and hours. Some of the people were out there almost every day collecting signatures because they believed so much in this. That's their words. Here are my words. This comes from my heart. You people work really hard. I can't imagine what you do. I, it's way beyond anything that I could comprehend doing, the amount of work you do and the number of, this is just one area, one concept, one neighborhood. You have the whole city to deal with. But my word is that that's the perception that's out there. The thing that scares me most of all is that people have lost trust. That's a big word, trust. Trust is not hard to get, but it's really hard to get back. And I would love the people to know what you do in your work and how you serve us, but now it's time for you to let the people know how you are serving them. I know full well, that's your job. That's what you do. We appreciate that, but we also wonder what happens behind closed doors. That's their words. It's also mine. And so, my feeling is, what I would like to do is, I would love for tonight that you approve this. Show people that you care. Show people that you really want to have healthy areas. Show people you want to have greenery, benches, grass, trees, places for people to gather, and not just more concrete blocks that look like West Colfax. And with that in mind, if you were to approve this tonight, you can also save the city somewhere between $150,000 and $350,000 in having a special election. I trust you. Please let the people of the city know that they can trust you also. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for all you do. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Durth. Okay, so circling back to the beginning of our list, this is now people who have left at least one comment previously this evening on Lakewood, or before tonight, on LakewoodSpeaks.org. So, I will call names. If you feel like you got your point made on Lakewood Speaks, you no longer feel like you need to come forward, feel free to wave me on, and we'll go on to the next name. We'll start with Glenn Newell, then we have Lucas Hagan, and then... We'll start with Glenn Newell, then we have Lucas Hagan, and then Reverend David Ben, no, sorry, Ben Hensley. Mr. Newell.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, neighbors respectfully, all of you. My name's Glenn, I live in Ward 2. Big words and poetry have failed me in thinking about this and wanting to figure out what to say about this to you all, and certainly you're going to hear enough words tonight, so I'll try to be as succinct and clear as I can. Everybody loves parks, and I'm one of those that thinks that far too many loopholes and exceptions exist when we go to build things here in Lakewood. Far too often, it turns out, maybe we should have held some people some rules. So all of that, it's not a shock that somebody was able to go out and get a petition to support this ordinance and the things that it says it wants to do. This is not a shock. But again, I want to be succinct and use words that are clear and understandable. Are you kidding me with this, that you're considering this? Is this real? This ordinance claims to create more parks and open space. We have the numbers, contrary to what somebody says. We have the numbers, I know you've seen them, I know city staff has them, I know the planning commission has them. I have them, I can give them to you. We know it's not going to do that. It claims to benefit the environment, we know that it will not. And in fact, it says nothing at all about the fee and lieu. Doesn't say anything about collecting, it doesn't say anything about not collecting it, doesn't make any rule on that at all. And in fact, as other people have said, and as you all well know, again, we have the numbers, we have the testimony of the people that do this work, it's going to eliminate practically the possibility of affordable housing in Lakewood. To even bring this to a discussion here tonight risks the possibility of nothing good happening as a result for anyone in Lakewood, not me, not you, not anybody that you care about. It's illegal? This proposed law violates or ignores every related law, rule, and stated intention for the citizens of Lakewood. It violates state laws, runs counter to established case law, and even property rights enshrined in the state constitution. So I call on you to dismiss this out of hand. Don't even vote on this tonight. This shouldn't be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Hagan.
Good evening, my name is Lucas Hagan. I'm the Research and Policy Manager at the Neighborhood Development Collaborative, a coalition of affordable housing developers across the Front Range. We're proud to count Metro West Housing Solutions as one of our members, as well as the Urban Land Conservancy and Elevation Community Land Trust. Affordable housing development requires a delicate balance between securing enough land to support the feasible number of units, maximizing community benefits, and adhering to zoning and building regulations. It also require, affordable housing developers are also aware of the social, environmental, and health benefits of parks and open space, and for the impact, and of the impacts of housing on health. However, this ordinance does not make open space more accessible to residents of affordable housing, it would drastically reduce the amount of affordable housing, units that can be built, and severely impact the viability of affordable housing developers in Lakewood by increasing the price, by increasing the cost of development. While 90% of Lakewood residents live within 10 miles or 10 minutes, 10-minute walk of a park, excuse me, more than a third of Lakewood households pay more than 30% of their income and housing costs. The average sale home price of a home in Lakewood is eight times higher than the teacher's salary. The price is $570,000, the teacher's salary is $65,000. While 90, the average teacher in Lakewood who earns $40 per hour, or $65,000 a year, would face severe financial challenges. Median rent in Lakewood, which is $1,600, already consumes 30% of an average teacher's salary, and a figure that would surely rise if new development is restricted or made more expensive by additional land dedication requirements. We understand that this citizen-initiated ordinance puts you as a council in a difficult position. We also recognize your strong support for affordable housing in the past, and we ask you to adopt this ordinance, reconcile it with state law, and minimize its impact on affordable housing development in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Hensley.
Good evening, my name is Ben David Hensley, and I serve as a pastor to Lakewood United Methodist Church and as a founding board member of the Community Investment Alliance. Council members, I rise today in opposition to this initiative being adopted tonight. I believe that this initiative, should it be passed, will create a de facto illegal status quo in our city. Refer it to an election. Despite what has been said tonight, the people have in fact not spoken, please allow more than 8,000 electors in this city of over 150,000 to speak to this initiative. Much has already been said about the illegality of this initiative, and I want to additionally point out how it would make complying with the recently passed House Bill 1313 impossible, a bill that requires us as a transit-oriented municipality to meet certain housing goals. This initiative, if passed, will make it impossible for us to meet our goals as a city that has accepted the conditions of Proposition 123. This initiative is an end runaround, the years of advocacy, public input, and work that has been done to establish a plan to make housing affordable in our city of Lakewood. This initiative, if passed as written, will constitute an anti-growth law in effect, and frankly, I think, that if it is left as written, it'll be more effective in hampering growth in our city than SGI ever was. It is hard to listen to arguments in support of this initiative claiming how this won't affect affordable housing development when no effort was made to exempt the development of affordable housing in the text of this initiative. This is an anti-growth law, and it's dressed up as an initiative to increase parkland. It will, if passed, succeed in interfering with our ability to make this city a fiscally accessible place to live. QED. This initiative, if passed, will be litigated in court, and it will fail there, with our taxpayer dollars being wasted in the process of defending it. This initiative must not be adopted tonight, and it must be defeated in the special election that will follow. This anti-growth initiative is not what our city needs. We shouldn't be litigating our debate over how dense the city of Lakewood should be through the back door of parkland dedication ordinances. We certainly need parkland, especially in Ward 2, of which I am a resident. And that parkland must also be strategically and equitably placed, and not just arbitrarily shoved alongside every new residential and only residential development that this city approves. We certainly need parkland improvements, but removing the impact fee and lieu will add difficulty in funding those improvements or the purchase of additional land for parkland dedication. What we need more of, desperately more of, is for people who work in the city of Lakewood to be able to afford to live in the city of Lakewood. What we need more of is to do the one thing that actually will end homelessness in our city, and that is to the development of affordable housing. This policy as written will make it impossible to meet our affordable housing goals. Everyone here who actually develops affordable housing successfully will attest to that. And this initiative will disenfranchise the beneficiaries of our vision to be an inclusive city, making it even more difficult for all of those people who serve this community to live here in the communities they serve. So I voice my strong opposition to this initiative, and ask for any legal avenue to be pursued to defeat it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bradley Bruce, then Connie Williams, and then Lenora Herskovitz.
Hi, my name is Brad Bruce, I live in Ward 2. I'm going to start off by making some fearful blanket statements about this ordinance. This ordinance will reduce the amount of land legally available to build more homes, which will increase the cost of owning a home. This ordinance reduces the density of residential plots, of which increasing car dependence, which harms the environment far more than a few extra, a few hundred extra potential trees ever will. This is a ton of changes. I went ahead, I printed out the current copy of Chapter 14.16 of Lakewood Municipal Code and compared it against the proposed changes of the ordinance. That's what I've highlighted here in orange here. This is a lot of changes. Anyone that tells you this is not going to be a ton is lying. So I just want to go through a few of these and just kind of show how it will not help with parks, and certainly will not help with saving the environment, also will definitely increase the cost of homes. So first off, Section 1416020, park standards. This part has been changed basically to remove the different following elements. Five acres per 1,000 population for regional parks, three acres per 1,000 population for community parks, 2.5 acres per 1,000 population for neighborhood parks. So it seems like there's already some sort of calculation to determine how much parkland should be dedicated when homes are, or when residential plots of land are developed near existing parks. All of that is removed, so now every single reason, every single plot of land will be required to have this dedication. The Section 1416030 is completely removed. This is what stipulated that regional parks would satisfy, satisfied by Bear Creek Lake Park, William Frederson Hayden Park, Bear Creek Greenbelt, Jefferson Count Park. Basically, this just says that regional and state parks would, again, calculate into this calculation. That is completely removed. Again, we're just building micro parks all over the place now. One of the biggest, and my, the biggest issue I have is in Section 1416040, it changes the number, the density factor here, from 5.5 acres of park area per 1,000 anticipated population to 10.5. This would require development acres of 10 acres to double the amount of parkland dedicated. Again, this is going to reduce the number of buildings that we can build, this is going to increase the cost of homes. And another thing it does is, section, sorry, very last one. So 1416100 is, basically says, this chapter will, this chapter shall be reviewed by city council every five years, beginning five years after the effective date of the ordinance. And so that's just being completely removed, so city council can never come back to this. And the last section that is actually being added is, "If any part, section, or sentence or clause of the ordinance shall be, for any reason, be questioned in any court and shall be abrogated unconstitutional or invalid, such judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remaining provisions of this ordinance." Basically, I don't know why you would add that unless you're expecting it to be sued. Please reject this ordinance, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Connie Williams.
If this one would be easier, this, got it.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep. We have one that's lower, if that would be easier for you.
See that one, I apologize.
He's hiding.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
I am Connie Williams, I live in Ward 3. City council members, I urge you to approve the Save Open Space Initiative. You're hearing a lot of pros and cons regarding this initiative. Some commenting on finances, some on its feasibility, some on the benefits, and some on the drawbacks. I am going to approach this initially from a different perspective, the perspective of my dog. Now, those of you that know me may not be surprised by that. His perspective is, parks are great. I think most people agree with that. I don't know if it's a mental, physical, or psychological impact they have, but whatever it is, it's positive. I am blessed to live across the street from a park and walk my dog there every day. While there, I swear, he smiles. And most people are willing to share a smile and a hello. It's so simple, yet so very rare these days. Communing with nature somehow changes our perspective. That is something all Lakewood residents deserve. This initiative would provide that. While developments make money for our city, the benefits of open spaces are priceless. They are spiritual and healing for a world that greatly needs it. Combining open spaces into new developments is not going to deter development, it is only going to improve it. Some may say that's naive, but I believe many good ideas start with that initial response, and then are achieved with passion, determination, and optimism. This is a unique opportunity to make a positive, lasting, tangible, and ethereal difference in the lives of Lakewood residents. You can make it happen. I thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and please thank and send our regards to your dog. We love Lakewood's dogs. Ms. Herskovitz, then I have Celia Greenman, then Katie McKenna.
Good evening, council. Taking on the challenge of organizing a community-driven initiative is not an impulsive choice. It's a last resort when all efforts have been exhausted. If our elected officials repeatedly tell us that they'd like to help, but there's nothing they can do, then concerned citizens can either give up or mobilize into action. Perseverance won out, leading to the creation of the Save Open Space Green Initiative. Now it is your turn to make a choice. You can vote for the ordinance, change, supported by over 6,000 Lakewood residents, or you can send it to a special election funded by taxpayers. In the past seven years, there has only been one initiative that went to a special election. In July 2019, this Strategic Growth Initiative finally reached the voters. This was originally scheduled for November 2017 in a general election, but legal challenges encouraged by some city officials caused the long delay. The petitioners eventually won in court and at the ballot box. More recently, the election of Mayor Strom created the need to fill her vacated council seat because she had not completed her term. This resulted in a special election earlier this year. A similar situation could occur if Counselor Stewart wins a seat in the State House. She has another year left in her term, and so council, and on council then, well, that seat would have to be filled by a special election. Depending on this body's decision tonight, there is the potential for an additional election. Unfortunately, these two cannot be combined, because the city was so eager to have the petition signatures counted before the October 10th deadline, that they hired extra help to achieve this goal. They beat the deadline by a week, so a special election would have to take place by January 14th. Unfortunately, that's too early for a Ward 3 election if needed. Decisions rendered over the next few days will determine if these special elections will be needed. Moving forward, we need to find a balance between housing development and preserving the quality of life. Myopic planning can lead to unintended consequences. Please remain open-minded and responsive to Lakewood's diverse voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
The citizens' initiative to eliminate the fee and lieu for parkland dedication originated because people were tired, tired of seeing building after building of massive multi-story apartment complexes built out to the sidewalks. out to the sidewalks. These have been described as Soviet-style buildings. They are immense, and they cause streets to become clogged with more traffic and parked cars. And for the construction, mature trees and green space are eliminated. In the last session, the state legislature passed a number of land use bills aimed at addressing the population growth of the Front Range by adding denser developments. However, what I've heard from talking to many, many people over the summer is that planners are not taking into account the existing residents, the existing neighborhoods. Indeed, if Lakewood had adhered to its own municipal code regarding land dedication, had followed its own zoning ordinance for tree preservation, and followed the existing comprehensive plan that states that, "Through the site plan review process and design guidelines, ensure that new multifamily mixed-use and commercial developments adjacent to single-family neighborhoods are compatible by incorporating appropriate design, scale, height, transition, and connectivity to seamlessly integrate with the neighborhood." If these prescriptions had been followed, the authors of the initiative would not have felt compelled to create the petition, and there would not have been over 8,000 signatories supporting this all-volunteer effort. I spent a Saturday afternoon in Denver in, a couple months ago, and I passed a residence hotel near Union Station. It's a senior residence. And on a few benches outside, there were some residents, and they were speaking and just, or maybe just looking at the sidewalk. And I thought, oh, my gosh, it is so sad that these people have nothing to look at except pavement, not a speck of green space around. And this could be the future, the future look of Lakewood if our concern is just warehousing people without considering that people thrive with green space. Sustainability has become a hot topic, but it is more than just charging stations, or solar panels, or dense developments. An easy path to sustainability is to preserve, protect, and establish green space. It is a benefit to residents and the environment as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie McKenna, then Joshua Comden, then Regina Hopkins, and then Mr. Rob will be ready for your sheet. If anyone hasn't signed up tonight that would still like to sign up, we've got a sheet up here in the front. There you go. Ms. McKenna, you're up. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. Thanks for your time tonight. My name's Katie McKenna, and I'm an affordable housing developer with Archway Communities, a Lakewood-based nonprofit organization that's been working here for 50 years. Archway is opposed to the content of this ordinance, specifically increasing the parkland dedication and removing the fee-in-lue, and urges council to move forward in a way to minimize the impact on affordable housing development. Archway Communities develops and operates affordable housing communities, and we also provide a variety of critical services to our residents. And we advocate for housing policy on a nonpartisan basis based on our experience working with residents and as a developer of affordable housing. Specific to this ordinance in the context of Lakewood, housing data from the Denver Regional Council of Governments, or Dr. COGS, show that Lakewood faces a housing affordability crisis due to insufficient housing production. And we, as Archway, appreciate the council's effort to address these challenges. Earlier this year, the Lakewood Housing Policy Commission proposed actionable and data-driven solutions to address Lakewood's high housing costs. And additionally, Lakewood's strategic housing plan that was adopted in February of 2024 and developed with extensive community input provides a roadmap out of the current housing crisis. If it were to go into effect as written, this ordinance would significantly undermine the City Council's notable accomplishments to solve Lakewood's housing crisis with these plans you've set forth. By way of a hypothetical example, if there were a one-and-a-quarter-acre site near transit, say near a light rail station, that's currently zoned to allow multifamily housing and could accommodate 150 new affordable apartments, following the math in the ordinance, this site would be undevelopable because it would require 2.3 acres of parkland to be set aside. I don't think the intent with all of these great affordable housing plans that you're working is to make housing near transit undevelopable. Understanding that this ordinance is citizen-initiated and recognizing the challenging position that you're in, Archway urges council members to move forward in a way that you all see fit to minimize the negative impact on affordable housing development and continue to seek future solutions and implement land use practices that support the development of the much-needed affordable housing in this community. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Comden.
Hello, Joshua Comden, Ward One. I've heard a lot of comments say that this is not going to stop development, this isn't about stopping development, and then go on to complain the concrete jungle and how developers get away with everything. I don't know, there seems to be some conflict in that a little bit. I've also heard people talk about that they don't want it to be like West Colfax. I think West Colfax is wonderful. I'm trying, I'm desperately trying to move there and save up money to be there. It's going to take a while, and I'm even planning on starting a podcast to talk about West Colfax. Yeah, I, I'm probably pretty park spoiled, you could say. My apartment complex is sitting between two parks, and there's a park that's one-half mile away from me. And yet, I'm still desperate to go towards West Colfax that everyone has been talking about that is a horrible place to be. Yeah, this is going to be a real detriment to affordable housing, as you've heard. And you have to remember and consider the fact that we committed, I think, a year ago to that State Proposition 123 to get some money. I don't know how that's going to affect it if they're not able to develop. Where are they going to take that money back and all that? So I hope you do not pass this, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comden. Regina Hopkins. Quick reminder, anybody that wants to speak that hasn't signed up yet, you can do it up here in the front.
Regina Hopkins, Ward Five. Good evening, City Council members and Mayor. We are here tonight with a common goal: to bring positive change to Lakewood. As elected representatives to serve our city's best interests, this evening, you have, this evening, you have the chance to enact one of the most significant changes in our history, reflecting a commitment to both human well-being and protection for all of life that shares our community. I want to express my strong support for the Save Open Space Lakewood petition and urge you to do the same. For the first time in Lakewood's history, a dedicated group of volunteers gathered thousands of signatures to bring an initiative to the ballot. This remarkable support highlights what residents truly value: preserving green spaces and parklands for all, while ensuring wildlife and plants have homes too. A call to end the fee-in-lue buyout of parkland dedication is clear. Instead of selling these precious areas to the highest corporate bidder, we have an opportunity tonight to pursue a balanced approach that prioritizes shared spaces for both people and nature. Some may claim this ordinance threatens affordable housing, but let's be honest, Lakewood lacks true affordable options, and even those labeled as affordable are often out of reach for many. This focus on human housing overlooks our responsibility to share this planet with other species. Preserving green spaces is essential for our survival. Without a healthy ecosystem, housing humans becomes meaningless. Instead of overdeveloping Lakewood, why not focus on revitalizing underused and abandoned cities throughout America, like Detroit, for example? Pushing for population growth in our already congested city will only strain our dwindling green spaces and degrade the quality of life for all residents. Longtime residents are now often overlooked in favor of prioritizing newcomers and outside interests from developers. Promoting endless human expansion over protecting our environment is a direct march towards ecocide, recklessly endangering the future of all life on this planet. I am gravely concerned that failing to adopt this ordinance will allow builders to buy their way out of creating park spaces, leading to concrete sprawl throughout our city. Tonight, I urge you to make a historic choice to, for Lakewood's legacy and stand with the people you represent by protecting our valuable green spaces. This will send a powerful message to the future generations that Lakewood values and defends its open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rob.
I have Jessica Goode.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jessica Goode. I am resident of Ward Two. I grew up in Golden. I'm a graduate of Lakewood High School and moved my family back here to Lakewood a few years ago, partially because of the parks and open space and the kind of welcoming city that Lakewood is. I'm a parks advocate. I refresh the Lakewood website all the time, looking at an update on that Two Creeks Park because I'm ready to walk the kids there from my house. So I hope you understand how much I care about parks, as I say my testimony here tonight. I am an environmental advocate by profession. I spent 15 years working on environmental policy, including most recently at Conservation Colorado, the state's largest environmental organization. So personally and professionally, I'm an environmentalist. But I'm here today to say this ordinance is bad environmental policy. It disingenuously pits parks and open space against affordable housing, a choice we don't have to make. At a time when we need to cut carbon pollution, save energy, conserve water, this ordinance blocks a straightforward solution to do all of that, which is to build more affordable housing. Building urban infill will be, is important for our environment and for addressing our climate crisis. These are intertwined crises, the climate crisis and the housing crisis. When we block urban infill, we increase the pressure to sprawl more, and that harms the very natural areas and open space that this ordinance purports to protect. In addition to being an environmentalist professionally, I'm on the board of the Action Center, a nonprofit that supports our neighbors with immediate needs like food, clothing, and affordable housing. And this ordinance undermines our city's ability to address its housing crisis. Housing crisis like this means that our neighbors have to make tough choices, whether it's paying rent, having to afford utilities, or groceries. It is up to our city to build more affordable housing, and we need more, we need more, not less, and this ordinance makes there be less affordable housing across the city. Ideally, you will reject this. I know you cannot do that. You are in a place tonight where you cannot reject or modify this ordinance. And ideally, a more balanced policy and look at Lakewood's park dedication policy would be pursued. So I understand the position that you are in, but with that in mind, I urge you to refer this measure to voters. Let the other 147,000 of us who didn't have a say in this have a chance to vote. Something that changes our city so drastically on both the environmental and the affordable housing perspective and changes the character of the place that I chose to make my home, I deserve to have a vote on that. I know on so many, I and so many other Lakewood residents who care about both the environment and affordable housing would want to have a say in this matter. Thank you for your service to our city, and I appreciate everything you're doing here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Rob.
Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing tonight. Again, reminder, lakewoodspeaks.org will be available until 10 a.m. tomorrow, 10 a.m. tomorrow. And with that, Mayor Protam, may I have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2024-28 on second and final reading.
Second. Thank you. And I will now open it up to council for council questions, comments, and all of the above. I have no hands. We have no comments, no questions? Okay. All right. While we wait for hands to come in, Counselor Stewart, Counselor Stinks, and then Counselor Maia Guerrero.
Thank you, Mayor. My first round of questions and comments, there is, there is a lot to unpack in this. My biggest concern right now that I just want to focus on because it, I think, makes this decision particularly difficult, is not necessarily around the merits of the ordinance, but around the alignment with the state law and the legality of this ordinance. Ms. McKinney Brown, I just have a couple of questions for you, which you may or may not be able to answer. The Colorado State General Assembly last year passed House Bill 1313, Transit-Oriented Development, which contained an addition to the state statute, which appears to me, when I read it, to require a municipality to allow for a fee-in-lue process when creating land dedication ordinance and processes around housing development. And so to me, the plain reading of that statute is in direct conflict with a really major piece, not all of the pieces, but a really significant piece of this particular proposed ordinance. I don't know if you can answer with a yes or no whether or not that is true, but I will go ahead and ask.
So I cannot discuss this publicly because if it passes, it will be my job to defend it. So anything I say is, will be held against the city. So I can't discuss any legality issues. I can inform the City Council that it is very well-established law, and I'm just going to read this right out of a case. "No discretion rests with administrative officers to pass upon the validity of an ordinance proposed by the people. Such ordinance being clothed with the presumption of validity and its constitutionality will not be considered by the courts prior to its adoption. After it is adopted, it can be questioned by anybody who feels harmed by it." So at this point, whether it's legal or not is, is not something that we can discuss.
So if I wanted the answer to that question, I would need to ask for an executive session? Okay. The, just completely outside of the merits of how this ordinance is written and whether or not functionally it is going to make it cost prohibitive to develop affordable housing, amongst many other things, I have really significant concerns about the legality of this ordinance. But we don't get to make a decision tonight on the legality of this ordinance. We either get to pass it or send it to the voters. And the way that I feel right now is that it is our job at City Council to wrestle with these difficult legal questions. It is our job to do that. And given the significant legal concerns around the conflict with the state law that was passed this summer, in addition to the fact that I think that there are other legal concerns around whether or not the sheer volume of land dedication required without a fee-in-lue constitutes an illegal taking, feels incredibly irresponsible to spend money on a special election and send a matter with such really on a special election and send a matter with such really significant legal concerns to the voters. It feels like the choice we have tonight is to either pass an illegal ordinance or send an illegal ordinance to the voters. So that's where I'm sitting right now, and that's what I'm wrestling with.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. Who doesn't love parks, right? We all do. And, and we're fortunate in Lakewood to have a lot of really cool parks. And frankly, I really like the improvements that the fees-in-lue have carried over into the parks, Addenbrook and Carmody, and the list goes on and on. And so fees-in-lue haven't been a bad thing. And so we are grappling with the unintended consequences of this, which, which are great. And I feel because of the legalities, as Counselor Stewart spoke to, that it is likely to go to court. And when will it go to court? In my opinion, it will more than likely go to court sooner if we pass it tonight, if we approve it tonight, rather than later if we send it to a vote of the people. So darn, I hate when my crystal ball doesn't work, and, and yet, as near as I can tell, that's what would happen, that it will go to court, and I'm all for sending it to court sooner so that we can move on. I'm on the Housing Policy Commission, and yeah, the numbers, the math, math doesn't lie. You know, you have this much space, and you have this much that has to be dedicated to open space. Well, then, what does that take away from? Takes away from how many units can be built. And we heard people talk about, well, there hasn't been enough affordable housing built anyway, so why, why worry about affordable housing? Well, we have to. So maybe it hasn't in the past, but we certainly are active in working towards affordable housing, and we certainly don't want to limit it. So I, I think I'll close with that. Thank you.
Counselor Maia Guerrero.
I have a couple of questions, I think, for staff, and I apologize for not sending them in earlier. They were inspired by our, our range of comments this evening and also on Lakewood Speaks, which kept coming in all afternoon. And my first question is, do, I remember in the budget conversation, we talked about this, do you have an estimate of how many acres of new parkland we have dedicated or purchased in the last 12 years or 10 years or any range that is the one that you already
I'm sorry, I do not have that information with me. I can, I can reach out to staff and see if I can get an answer.
That would be fabulous. And then I think my other question, which is probably even harder to answer, is about how many affordable units that we think have been built in the last 10 years? Because I definitely personally know of a couple of West Metro developments that have happened, and then a couple of Archway developments that have happened. And I think a Jefferson Center development as well, all in Ward Two.
Yeah, I know we have Archway and Metro West people here that can tell. Maybe if you could give us your time range?
I think, I said, the fee-in-lue, I think somebody mentioned was the 12 years they haven't seen parks and they haven't seen affordable housing. And so that's what I was really speaking to, but I think if there's either a more, a more narrow or a longer time period that is like what you have the right statistics for, that is fine for these purposes. I just, I want to clarify, like, is that true? Because my understanding of the amount of parks and the amount of affordable housing that I've seen in the time that I've lived in Lakewood is not zero.
It's not. There's been a lull the past few years with the Strategic Growth Initiative.
Right.
But prior to that, there had been regular, I don't have those numbers.
Great. Well, that is, I mean, that is still very helpful. I think that, you know, one of, one of these things that, that we see coming up and a lot of the folks that are opposed to these initiatives, thank you so much for your time, is, is this exact sort of false petting of, of affordable housing and the environment against each other? And this one, I think, this initiative more overtly does that than the Strategic Growth Initiative did, but that growth cap did, had sort of the same rhetoric, where people were talking about climate impact and water impact and land impact, and kind of hiding behind the environmental, like, the honest environmental value that Lakewood has and that the people of Lakewood have, that people want to see rightfully so, protection of parks and open space, protection of our air, and protection of our water. But this idea that then preventing density and preventing affordability and preventing therefore, like, economic diversity in our city is the only way to achieve or protect those environmental values, has never sat right with me, and that's why, one of the things that I did when I, before I was on council and was working in a conservation organization where I have eight years of environmental policies specifically focused on environmental justice, toxic air and water pollution, and community organizing, I oppose, we, we worked to oppose that SGI. And I, I really do understand that the vast majority of people who are supportive and working hard on this initiative are coming from this place of, of fear around losing our parks. But the, the, there's a huge increase. This is not just getting rid of a fee-in-lue. There's a massive increase in the amount of land per unit that has to be dedicated in addition to getting rid of the fee-in-lue. It does not have flexibility for affordability. It does not have flexibility for the part of town, if it's near transit, if it's already near a grocery store, any of those things. And additionally, I don't, I think it is also something to bring into the space that the people who are currently living in our parks and living on our streets are also my constituents, they are also your neighbors, and they need more pathways out of homelessness. And the, the, this, this notion that this initiative, which we have heard from nonprofit developers, so developers that don't get more money in their pockets from building density, that they, that they will be prevented from building in our community, that is too big of a risk to me. And I understand that lots of my colleagues are aligned with me on that, on that kind of question, on is this illegal and what are the unintended consequences? Coming from Ward Two, where my constituents in that district specifically pretty handily voted against the SGI, the, the Growth Initiative, even though it passed overall, it is also where the majority of our density has been built in the last 10 years, it is also where the majority of our affordable housing has been built in the last 10 years, it is also where the majority of our homeless population lives, and it is also where we need more parks the most. I think that at least my ward would probably vote it down, and I think we would end up saving money and time in the courtroom by sending it to the ballot. But again, the crystal ball's not working, so I have a ton of respect for, for whatever choices end up happening, but I will be attempting with my vote to send this to the vote of the people, so a higher percentage of our constituents and of the citizens of Lakewood are able to decide on this, because I truly believe that they will be able to see through this and would vote it down, and then continue to hopefully push on me and hold me accountable and email me and call me many times a day to make sure that we do protect and invest in our parks.
Mayor Protam shares a, then Counselor Over, then Counselor Low.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to respond to Counselor Maia Guerrero's request. I believe since 2018, we've acquired or purchased 170 to 192 acres. So that's information not based in fear, that's based in fact. I also just wanted, I don't have many questions for staff because I think we all know that we're in a very hard position tonight. We talked, we heard from a lot of folks tonight, and I know that there was a few people who mentioned this in their public comment, but the reality is most, everybody was talking about their fatigue on apartments. We'd heard a lot about Soviet-style building. And to me, that's just reinforcing that this is less about open space and more about housing density. So we're seeing the same sort of model wrapped up in some greenwashing. We did adjust fees-in-lue earlier this year. We increased it by more than $200,000 per acre as part of what we were supposed to do every five years. So we were responsive to that, but apparently not responsive enough, and here we are tonight. There was a remark on Lakewood Speaks this evening about a modest request to increase the land density, and again, to me, this is a signal of community members maybe not understanding the long-term impacts. Moving from 5.5 acres to 10.5 acres makes this undevelopable. We heard this tonight from our nonprofit partners, and so, you know, people's understanding that this isn't much of an increase when it's nearly double what it was previously makes this a path forward with no development, which I think is what we're really looking for here. For me, the cost of the special election is high, and I do, I share in my co-counselor in Ward One's position that I'd rather just get this ball rolling. I think that there is a good sentiment here, and I understand how much we value open spaces, and I think that that's signified and showcased with the amount of parklands that we've purchased and acquired since 2018 that has been grossly misrepresented in these conversations as not happening. I also would reinforce a point that was made by another Ward One person tonight during public comment, you know, really disappointed in how much we were bagging on West Colfax. When I look at West Colfax, which is part of the district that I represent, density is not meant for everyone. All parts of the community look and feel different, and West Colfax is meant to absorb some density there. There was a strategic plan that showcased that, not only in West Colfax, but in Union Corridor, two parts of Lakewood that are in my community. So this one-stop solution for everything really puts us in an impossible position, and I think it decreases and diminishes the diversity that we see across our community and our different housing needs. We all value open spaces, but what we're doing tonight is putting ourselves in an impossible position to either pass something that may not have a legal path forward or to ask the good citizens of Lakewood to pass something that may not have a legal path forward. And so for me, I'd like to just move forward with this process, adopt it tonight, and then see where we go next from here. Thank you.
Counselor Over.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I had a lot of notes here, but you guys have done such a great job that you've covered it at all, from all of my points, pretty much. I'd like to say this, this ordinance isn't perfect. I'd point out one thing I'm not a fan of. There's a, a part in there that says the parkland can't be detention or retention ponds, and, and I have seen little park, pocket parks built out of retention ponds, which are landscaped, and actually, they're dog parks, too. So they can be done really well. We don't seem to do that around here, but they can be done really well. But I think it boils down to, I'm going to go back to the Soviet-style apartments. Do we want Soviet-style apartments like around West Colfax now? And, and I'm really happy a couple of people brought that up because that's, that's a thing I've railed against during my campaign. I mentioned how the beacon on Union reminds me of a Soviet-style apartment, and some of the other ones, too, but that was the one I was really railing against the most. And I have been behind the Iron Curtain and have seen those things 20 years, 30 years after they're built, and they're slums. And so I don't like that idea at all. I'm, I'm definitely favoring this ordinance. Like I said, I think it goes a little too far in a couple of spots, but since, you know, the fee-in-lue, we had the choice of fee-in-lue or parkland dedication, they never took the parkland dedication. So the pendulum swings, it swung way too far in one direction, maybe it's going to swing a little bit too far in the other direction, but I would rather see developments with parkland than developments without parkland. So I definitely support this ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Low.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this issue is sufficiently consequential for the city and sufficiently complicated. I hope you'll indulge me. I wrote a couple remarks down, it'll also help prevent me from rambling. In considering our situation this evening, I can't help but quote one of my favorite characters from television, Sam Seaborn, played by Rob Lowe, no relation, in the pilot episode of The West Wing. This is just bad on so many levels. First, as many have noted, the way this is drafted has created a deep, a deep legal dilemma for Lakewood. In my opinion, this is quite likely, it's quite likely this ordinance directly conflicts with state law and is probably also unconstitutional. So right off the jump, those are two awfully big problems for an ordinance that, under our charter, we must now either pass or refer to voters for a post-holiday special election at a cost most likely exceeding $300,000. I hate the idea, as some other counselors have already alluded to, of pushing what is frankly a legal mess onto our own voters without a mechanism of dealing with those legal liabilities, placing what will effectively be a legal sword of Damocles and a cloud of uncertainty over every affordable and attainable housing project in Lakewood. But honestly, that isn't the only thing that troubles me. All these residents that we talked about tonight who signed this petition were asked, I know this because I walked past many of the folks collecting these signatures in Ward Three, do you want to save open space in Lakewood? Will you sign a petition supporting an ordinance to do that? Now, if that's all I had heard, I probably would have signed, too, because like all them, I care deeply about protecting our parks and open spaces. I run around Belmar Park every morning. I love that park. Now suppose instead of the folks circulating the petition asking that, they'd ask this instead. Will you please sign a petition to support an ordinance that is probably illegal under state and federal law, will cut off a vital funding source to maintain and grow our city's parks and open spaces, is extraordinarily unlikely to actually save any open space or result in any new open space, and in the process will stymie our efforts to reduce Lakewood's greenhouse gas emissions and throttle any serious effort to make housing more affordable and attainable for Lakewood families? In my opinion, if the petitioners had asked that question, I think they would have gotten significantly fewer than the 6,400 valid petition signatures that they actually got. And bluntly, the way I just described the ordinance is much, much more accurate as a title for it than "save open space." You know, my husband and I live in a wonderful townhouse community in the Belmar area. We love it. The density of our townhouse development, I calculated this, is about 25 units per acre of attached multifamily. Under this ordinance, with the doubling of the, the dedication, you know, numbers with, with the formula in that ordinance, someone building that from scratch in Lakewood, building townhouses, would have to turn over roughly 40% of the land to the City of Lakewood under the formula in this ordinance. We already heard from Metro West Housing that 29% turning over to the, the city would probably kill a property. So this, never mind apartment buildings, never mind the Soviet-style architecture, quote-unquote, let's just talk about killing townhouses. Here's the thing, in a system with an open market, which we do have, no developer in their right mind is going to do that. No developer is ever going to willingly give away 40% of their land. Why would they? They have options. They will build it somewhere else. That is how economics works. A Washington Post analysis from just a few months ago found that townhouses, fourplexes, cottage courthouses, these are all examples of so-called missing-middle housing. Our residents don't have nearly enough of them in Lakewood, across Denver, or across America. It's a core driver of our housing affordability price, crisis. Missing-middle housing has densities right around the townhouse development where I live, requiring dedication, dedicating 30 to 50% of the land under this ordinance. Again, completely unfeasible. You already heard from Metro West Housing what a 29% dedication of land would do to a project. That's before we even consider condo or apartment housing anywhere Lakewood, in Colorado's fifth-largest city, which typically has a minimum density of 50 units per day, per acre, which, under the formula in this ordinance, means turning over at least 80% of the land and more likely 100% of the land for most apartment or condo developments, which obviously isn't going to happen. Developers don't come in, buy a bunch of land, and then turn 100% of it over to the state. That's just not what developers do. If we lived in, I'm sorry if folks would like to live in a world where that happens, but it doesn't. So nobody's going to develop housing that is any denser than single-family unattached houses anywhere in Lakewood. An infill community like ours, that means no new residential building, period. And talk about throwing the baby out with the back of bathwater, my friends, that also means no new open space. Because if nobody is building, nobody's going to set aside open space. So we're not going to get any open space, we're also going to shut down all affordable and attainable housing in the city. So we lose a critical revenue source to support our parks and open space and acquire new centrally-planned parks. We don't get any new open space, and we effectively ban the construction of residential housing that is denser than single unattached housing, decimating Lakewood's ability to do literally anything structural to confront our affordable housing and homelessness crises. For those who say that this petition is about environmentalism and sustainability, that same Washington Post analysis found that the average energy consumption of a single-family detached house is almost 50% higher than a single-family attached house, like the one that my husband and I have, and nearly three times as high as the average energy consumption of an average apartment or condo, all of which this ordinance effectively bans without saying that it bans them. Which, contrary to all of the sustainability goals and greenhouse gas reduction goals that keep hearing about in this chamber, is, is totally that I keep hearing about in this chamber, is totally contrary to those things. So when I say that the Lakewood residents who signed this petition may not have realized what they were signing on to, that's what I mean. Now, because of how this has been drafted and messaged, council unfortunately faces bad options and worse options. Sending a likely illegal, misleading ordinance to voters via a $300,000 special election in the middle of January is, to put it mildly, suboptimal. So I think, unfortunately, I'm wrapping up here, I think this initiative should not be sent to the voters until the legal issues are resolved. And as several other counselors have already suggested, under our charter, the only way forward, short of a special election, is to pass the ordinance. So frankly, with a heavy heart, given all the concerns I've outlined, that's what I plan to do tonight. I do hope there will be space, no pun intended, in the coming months, as this inevitably plays out in the courts, to address some of the deep concerns I've articulated tonight. And I do plan to work with my colleagues, and I hope with all of you, to do exactly that.
Counselor Nystrom.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think, at its face, this initiative petition is a flag being waved by citizens of this community to say that we are not being listened to. I remember sitting out there last October when some people just became aware of what was going on at South Yarrow, or 777 South Yarrow, and the question was asked repeatedly by Mr. Durth, "Are you listening?" I don't think anyone here tonight is listening. We had a study session on April 15th that showed how much parkland had been dedicated going back to like 1983. Did not include Peakview Park, but suffice to say, it was a minimal amount of parkland dedication. To address my co-counselor's comments here, what's not being proposed is townhouses. What is being proposed are apartments, tall apartment buildings, being built right up to the sidewalk. I think people took offense at what was said about West Colfax tonight, and I think the way it was worded was probably not the best. However, what is being built on West Colfax is not good for the human health, mentally or physically. And God forbid you have a dog. We need to listen. We need to make changes. We have been living through 13 years of an administrative decision to take fees instead of parkland. Maybe we don't need 10 acres, maybe we don't need 5 acres, but every apartment building should have some green space. It should have a walking path. It could have xeriscaping, low-water plants that attract pollinators. These are things that are basic, human, fundamental needs. It's also in need for our environment. I agree, we need density housing, but we are not going about it the right way. We are creating concrete pad after concrete pad. And even the concrete pad that was mentioned could be turned into something nice. It could be housing if it had trees or xeriscaping around it so people can get outside. If we learn nothing from all the studies that were done post-COVID, that is a necessary thing for people to survive. I think what people are asking for is, let's preserve what Lakewood is, let's make it habitable for everyone, let's make it good for the environment. We have a responsibility here as a big city in Colorado to do our part. We need to get better. Our greenhouse gas emissions are going up, our utilization of gas is going up. If we're building dense housing, it should not include gas appliances. These are all things that should be identified and changed and incorporated going forward. And yeah, we're in an untenable situation here, but there's a reason that this happened. We shouldn't have to keep having situations where citizens have to protest and put petitions out there and hire lawyers and do all of these things. This should be a situation where citizens are notified when something is being planned, and then they have an opportunity to speak out and make suggestions. We also should be consulting with environmental planners and environmental engineers. I don't think assessments have been done of that nature in a lot of things that have been built here in Lakewood. And that's unfortunate, and we can't go back and fix that. But what we can do is avoid causing further damage. And we cannot keep cutting down mature trees and expect our air quality to get better and expect citizens to be mentally healthy. And we will have another pandemic. That's just a scientific fact. And if we're not mindful of what we're doing and how we're doing it, that is going to help or detrimentally affect everybody that lives here. So whether this is a perfect petition or not is not the question. The question is, why did we get here? And how do we stop this from ever happening again? And how do we prevent more and more high, high-value, market-rate rental apartments when what we need is affordable housing? That keeps getting kicked around over and over again. And I think everybody in here realizes we need affordable housing, but it does not need to be a concrete building 12 stories high with nothing but sidewalk around it. So all I'm asking folks is, we need to listen. As a body, we need to listen. As a city, we need to listen. And we need to take positive action and engage with citizens in resolving this issue.
Counselor Laber. Hey, please, we listen to you. It's Counselor Laber's got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I heard "bur," and I was like, is that me? Okay, sorry. It's getting late. I'm getting loopier by the minute. I was reading the state law here just earlier, and I thought it was kind of an eloquent quote. It said, "Government regulations are essential to the public order and preservation of universally-held values, must be carried out in a manner that appropriately balances the needs of the public with the rights and legitimate expectations of the individual." I thought it was kind of an eloquent quote. It kind of reminded me of a quote the late Senator Stedman told me when I was an intern at the state legislature a million years ago. He once said, "Government can't make anyone happy, but it can spread the unhappiness around equitably." And I thought that was sort of apt to this situation. I, you know, I'm happy to be having this conversation. This isn't the way you want to have this conversation, but it's a good conversation to have. I agree with what a lot of us have said up here, my co-counselors. I think, you know, we have to figure out a way, and that's the job, you know, that's what you pay us to do, is for us to grapple with these issues and try to plug the holes and fix the problems that are brought to us. And, you know, it's an important job of citizens as well to, you know, be paying attention to what's going on in a city and to, you know, send us your thoughts, and I think that's what you've all done here today. So I appreciate really the opportunity to work on this. I'm one of those nerds who actually kind of likes, you know, zoning and development, and I think you kind of have to to be willing to even run for city council. So I see it as a challenge. I do think there are challenges on all sides, I will say. I'm hearing a lot of the comments, I'm hearing the concerns and the complaints, and, you know, this ordinance doesn't address all those things or a lot of those things. But it's certainly a signal that you want these things addressed, and this isn't new. Right? I ran in 2017 the first time, and what was going on now, or then, was the Strategic Growth Initiative. And I can tell you, you know, I hear a lot of comments about the council not doing what it needs to do. I agree with that. It's not doing enough, not doing it fast enough, and not doing nearly enough. But I will also say, I've been here long enough to know that we have done some things, and we need to do better, and we can continue to do more. I can tell you, I worked on the last revision of the fee and lieu, where at that time it was about increasing it, but there was also a concern about affordability at that time. So it was trying to balance those two things out. And then I came back to council this year, and the fee and lieu was increased again. So in my time here, it's increased at least twice. Also important to mention that we increased open space requirements through the development dialogue. I think that was in 2018 or 2019. Also, you know, I heard about inclusionary zoning. Well, we submitted a ordinance change for inclusionary zoning in 2018. The council at that time didn't take it up, didn't pass it, wasn't willing to entertain it, so it died. The council now is actually, it's in committee and working on it. So that's something that continues to, you know, be worked on. And I believe that that will pass probably sometime next year, hopefully sooner than later. So we are working on the other affordability piece. Now, a lot of the concerns and challenges with this ordinance, I think there are a lot of those as well, but I do hear the loud and clear part that we care about open space and parks. I did want to point out some of the things that people talked about, buffer zones. This is not being addressed in this. You know, you talk about buildings next to pavement. Well, this doesn't solve that. That could still happen under the current ordinances, even if this was passed today. So buffer zones is something that should be looked at as a body. Landscaping design, you hear about landscaping and the park benches, and that, well, this ordinance doesn't require any of that. So landscaping design is one of those things that would need to be looked at to actually address some of those things. Building design, Soviet-style building design, this ordinance doesn't solve that or change that. We actually did a commission, started a design review committee, commission, years ago, I don't remember what year it was now, for Union, I believe it was, and I think it's now moved to, I need to, it's moved to where?
Everywhere.
Okay, everywhere. So, you know, there has been efforts to tackle that issue as well, and these are, you know, continue to be things that the council grapples with. Anyway, I just wanted to point these things out, a little bit of a history lesson, because it feels like Groundhog's Day sometimes up here. But I just want you to know, the pressure is good, the squeaky wheel is good. That will help the council continue to move things forward. And I hear you loud and clear. And we also have to grapple with all the other challenges that our co-counselors, and, you know, I know some people want to write them off, but these are legitimate challenges, the legal issues. The state, you think the state's going to roll over and just not worry about the third-largest city in the metro area and about, you know, development? Third in the metro, fifth in the state. So, you know, this will probably, if were passed, and even if there were no legal challenges, would likely prop state legislation. I don't say that to scare anybody, but that's a reality, and that's what we all have to deal with as a community, but also as a council, is the realities that will come out of this. And that just means we need to work together to solve that. That's why I'm saying that. So, like, thanks for the challenge, I guess, and look forward to working on it, and we'll try to make the best decision we can. So, thanks.
Counselor Cruz, then Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. And I do appreciate everybody's time who came out to speak with us about this today, talk on Lakewood Speaks, and the discussion that this has continued to prompt for us in our community. I think what is true, and I think is true of all of us, is that there are a lot of questions about what the future of our city look like and what each of our role is in making our city a beautiful place to continue to live. And I think all of us are clearly grappling with those questions in really different ways. And I hope that that's kind of what, and that's what I hear reflected in the conversation that we're having. So I appreciate the level of, yeah, how much people are digging in. I think there is not a ton to be said that has not already been said, and so the things that I just wanted to highlight, one, I heard a lot about the conversation about public health tonight, and I think public health is something that means a lot to me as a person. It's my other job is in healthcare policy, right? I am the daughter of two public health professionals, and I think that we have to be really thoughtful about what public health is, because yes, access to parks and open space is public health. And I think it's great that 90% of people in Lakewood live within a 10-minute walk of a park in our community. And also, housing is public health. Housing is public health. And I know people agree with that who might not agree with me on some development things, but I think that that is something that we can agree on, right? And so when we are talking about something as serious as the future of our community and who can live here and what their experience is, I want us to be really thoughtful about how we are managing those values and who we are thinking about centering in those conversations. And so I think there are a lot of conversations about Colfax today. Love having Colfax at the center of all of this, as a lover of Colfax, but also somebody who recognizes that our built environment and public health on Colfax are not ideal. And keeping things the way they are in our city is not going to change that. I think this ordinance would not change that. It would make it worse with regard to what we've been hearing from our nonprofit housing developers, many of whose projects are on West Colfax, and I can think, I've walked them, I can point to them. And I know a lot of their residents do have access to some parks, like our awesome dog park, where I've met a lot of other folks, at Mount Air Park, right? And so all of that's to say, something has been coming to me through this whole conversation, which was a conversation I had with a constituent at the Two Creeks Neighborhood Association meeting who looked at me seriously, and we didn't agree on a lot of things, but he said, you know, "We are making the decision of, is this area going to continue to move up or is it going to continue to move backwards? Like, is this a place that I want to raise my kids? And a place where we continue to have vacant properties, a lot of which are commercial, by the way, right? And this is only talking about residential properties? I don't think is that the, although some of the good intentions that might be coming from folks who collected petitions on this ordinance are not going to create a future in which the person that I was speaking with can feel really confident about the vision of West Colfax moving forward with some of the developments that are proposed and what would not be feasible if this ordinance were to be enacted as stipulated. And I think that is even barring all the legal concerns that I think have been brought up. And so with that, with some of the pieces that I think my co-counselor has brought up with regard to what we're hearing in Ward Two, and even just in the straw poll of who I've heard from and who's reached out to me on this, I think in listening to my constituents and what my community wants, I agree that there is more to be done in thinking about how to make development more livable in our community, but this is not it. And I think that, if asked, I have full faith that the voters of Ward Two would see this for what it is, but I think that that should be their choice, and that is why I plan on voting to send this to a vote of the people.
Counselor Ryan.
One of the benefits of forgetting to push your request to speak button is you get to cross a lot of things off your list, things to say. One of the commentators was kind enough to share the story from his personal perspective and some of the things that people shared with him as they were signing it. And one of the things he said is that, you know, "If we approve this, we'll have more green space, parks, open space," and that's one of the things that people really wanted. And it's for a number of people, our parks and open space are spiritual, they're healing. And I agree with all of that. And I'm going to vote for this ordinance, but not for the reasons that I think it's a good ordinance. And the reason I'm going to vote for it is simply because of the other comment the same gentleman raised, and that is the issue of trust. Our voter, if we send this to the voters, they're going to trust that we believe that this is something that they should really consider, that this is not an illegal ordinance, that this is not going to be bad policy. We'd be breaking that trust. This is an illegal ordinance. It's, this ordinance is illegal under both state and federal law. It will be challenged as soon as it becomes effective, no matter which direction we go. And the courts will strike it down. The sooner, in my mind, that we do so, the better. The ordinance promises to apply to any project in which a permit has not been paid for, like 777 Yarrow. Goodness gracious, we would all wish we could say we have that silver bullet. But to promise people that this ordinance will apply to that project and stop that development is a false promise. The court will strike down that language as against the state constitutional law. Well-intended people have signed this with that understanding. And goodness, if that was, if this was that answer, I would be right there joining them. But it is not that answer. It's also illegal under the state statute that requires a dedication of real property that must provide the option of paying a fee rather than money instead of property dedication. Admittedly, that state law is not a model of clarity. But it does, it does require what it requires. And this ordinance, as proposed, removes that fee and lieu piece. Whether we think that's, we should remove- Whether we think that's, we should remove the fee and lieu or not, state law is pretty clear on this issue. The most damning part of the ordinance, though, is the part that we heard from some of our affordable housing folks and others, on the constitutionality piece of this. The city has broad authority to create land use laws, no question. But when those laws go too far, when they require too much, when they take too much property, they go too far and are unconstitutional. We've heard from our, from several people saying that this would require 20% of their property. We've heard one of my fellow counselors refer to his living situation in which that project would have required 40%. Another, some, some other individuals have shared with me a project that would require 67% of that property to be dedicated. You don't need to be a lawyer to know that if you have to churn over a third of your property, or two-thirds of your property, it's unconstitutional. It goes too far. We can't send an illegal ordinance to voters. We should have, we should vote to approve this ordinance, so that the legal process can start in striking this ordinance down. We also can't send an ordinance that makes false promises to voters. Falsely creating expectations that this ordinance will magically create twice as much parkland for free is not being truthful to the voters, and I won't do that. We all want to continue the legacy of parkland, and that's one of the reasons my wife and I chose Lakewood for its schools, for its open space. We enjoy that parkland, and by gosh, when I'm having a tough, tough day, I'm in that parkland. It is spiritual for me, and I will protect that. And the city could, can do a better job in terms of its fee and lieu parkland ordinance. It's one of the first things we started, and when this cloud, when the cloud of this ordinance is lifted, that ordinance, which I'm told is sitting on a shelf, just waiting for us to review and enact, I promise, we're going to, we're going to get that. And we're going to look at that fee and lieu piece. Maybe we can't get rid of the fee and lieu issue, but maybe there's a way that we can be smarter about how we handle that fee and lieu piece. Our passion for parks does not allow us to send an illegal ordinance to the voters. We've heard about the cost $350,000 to ask the voters to vote for something that's illegal. I won't do that. What would be the purpose of sending an illegal ordinance to the voters? So that we can wait several months while nothing gets built, and there's a cloud over the city as to what, what direction the city's going to head, and what can be built, and what cannot be built? I'm not going to do that. Sending this to a special election only delays the time in which a court can ultimately strike down this ordinance, and the longer the cloud of uncertainty will linger over the city. I say let's not wait, let's not delay, let's do this now. Let's not ask our residents to waste $350,000 on a special election to vote on an ordinance making false promises, and that is so blatantly illegal. Let's approve the ordinance and start the process now for the courts to strike it down.
Before we see how many counselors may want to speak in a second round tonight, I'll just take a moment to say a few words. As Counsel Ryan very astutely pointed out, a lot of the things have already been said at this point. But I will assert that I too, this evening, am a yes to move forward in passing this ordinance. There are some very legitimate legal concerns. It is, I can't even communicate the challenge. Either way, it's, it's, either way, it's so hard, but I do, at the core of my being, feeling, feel that it would be disingenuous for our voters to send something to them that we know has several potential legal implications. Ultimately, this will have to be sorted out in the courts, and I do, you know, I am hopeful that between that, and the work that we already started earlier this year addressing fee and lieu, and the parkland dedication ordinance, that we will come out on the other side of this with an improved ordinance that hopefully helps you all feel more heard. You know, things have been mentioned a few times tonight about not dedicating land over the last 12 years, but I am very honored to be one of your counselors that sits up here in front of you tonight, that we have voted time and time again to make land purchases by virtue of our Tabor funds. Thank you to you, our Lakewood voters, who have helped set aside those funds. That opportunity exists on your ballots that are due tomorrow. These are the kinds of things, parking, parkland acquisition and improvement is something that is funded by that. I would be remiss to not bring up, when we're having a conversation about Zero Parks, I have the opportunity to live almost just across the street from Pecu Park, that is amazing. And we have had the opportunity to add parks in much-needed areas, a couple of which in Ward One, and very excited about Two Creeks Park, also coming at some point, hopefully soon in Ward Two. So I want to just be very, very clear about the fact that parks are, maybe why most of us are sitting up here ever moved to Lakewood. Like Counsel Ryan, we picked our home because it is near a park, it's very important to my family, and we will continue to work to add to that parkland space. It may not be in the exact same way that other people would like that to happen, but it is important to us. And, you know, as a financial planner, I will say I'm not going to spend 300 and some thousand dollars sending to voters, something that we think that the courts are ultimately need to, going to settle. So those are my two cents, which actually ended up maybe being 75 cents. And with that, we'll go ahead and open up a second round for council comments, for those who may like to include more. Counsel Lowe.
Thank you, and I, I will keep this brief. I, I just have two more points I wanted to make. I was trying very hard to, to keep my original comments to five minutes, that's something I'm, I'm working on. But there were just two other, other final points I wanted to make. One, I, I actually wanted to piggyback on what the mayor just said about, about parks. You know, look, we, I think it's a totally fair, I, I get it. I, I think that the folks who are here that want more parkland have a point. I want more parkland in parts of Ward Three. Along the Colfax corridor, along Ward Two, we urgently need more parkland. There are definitely parts of, of Lakewood where we need more parkland. And let's be fact-based about this. You know, a study of downtown Denver recently found five acres of open space per 1,000 residents. That's compared to 10 acres per 1,000 in the National Planning Standards. Anyone want to guess what Lakewood is? 46 acres per 1,000 residents. So I, I, I only say that, I'm not saying, saying that we can't do more, that we can't do more to maintain our gorgeous parks, that we can't acquire more parks, but let's also be, be fair. We all love the city and park because it's got so much gorgeous parkland. The way I know you all agree with that is I've heard you over and over extolling the gorgeous virtues of crown jewels like, like Belmar Park, and Nattenbrook Park, and so many, and Bear Creek Park, and so many other, other amazing parks and open spaces in Lakewood. So let's be fair, we're not just a concrete jungle, is the phrase I keep, I keep hearing over and over. We've got an awful lot of beautiful open space, that's something that we all feel very strongly about. It's something that we should celebrate, it's something that we should protect, and I do think the fee and lieu revenue source is, is actually a very important funding source to make sure that we continue to, to preserve and protect the over 100 parks that constitute over 7,400 acres of open space in this incredible, beautiful city that we all love. The, the only other point I just want to make, I, I, I think you all could, could tell from my initial comments, I have a number of fairly deep concerns with, with this ordinance, and, and, and those are real, and I'm, I'm very convinced that, that fundamental economics means that, that this going into effect without revisions will, will really have fairly catastrophic consequences in our ability to, to promote our affordable housing goals and prevent homelessness. And I just want to say, you know, my, my first job out of college, I was a, a field organizer. I spent a lot of time, you know, pounding, pounding doors and organizing volunteers. And I do just want to say, even though I, I clearly don't agree with a number of folks in this room about the, this, this initiative, and I, I feel very strongly about it, I really appreciate the passion and the drive, and that, that a lot of folks who spend a lot of time clearly volunteering to collect signatures bring to this cause. I know that it, it's fueled by your love of Lakewood. I share that love of Lakewood, and on the eve of a really consequential election, I, I agree with what Mr. Durth said. Thank God that we live in a country where we can stand in a room and debate issues like this, and have a free and fair, you know, have free and fair elections, and have an open debate about really important issues that we care about in our community, and let's all make sure that we preserve and protect that, no matter what happens with this ordinance.
Counsel LeBeur, then Counsel Neistrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just reading this chapter, and Chapter 29, under the revised statutes about local government, it kind of just made me think of something. I'll just read it real quick. It says, "The General Assembly finds and declares that individual property owners should not be required into the guise of the policing power regulations of the use and development of property to bear burdens for the public good that should be more properly borne by the public at large." And it reminded me that there is an election tomorrow, and the public at large will have an opportunity to weigh in on additional money for local governments to be used on park space, both in the county and in the city of Lakewood, 1A and 2A, and I encourage you all to vote. Thanks.
Counsel Neistrom.
I just want to say that I appreciate your comments about how many acres of parkland we have per resident. I also want to call out the fact that Bear Creek Lake Park is in that calculation, and that is an under imminent threat. It is, in fact, federal land. I don't think anybody here that worked on this petition or spoke tonight is looking for us to have another 50-acre park somewhere. That's not going to happen, we all know that. We do need to have some sensible development moving forward. We need townhouses. We need housing that people can purchase and develop equity for their future. We continue to build apartment buildings that are market-rate rentals. It's not addressing our affordable housing. That is a niche that needs to be figured out, and we need to develop accordingly. But that does not mean it should have no park space around it. Doesn't have to be a massive park, it needs to be an outside space for people to enjoy. Development, affordable housing, all of that can work together. None of it is mutually exclusive, and it doesn't all need to be concrete. We continue to add concrete to Lakewood, which causes further environmental problems, and we're not offsetting it. And again, we need to listen to what people are saying, what their concerns are. We can't continue to cut down mature trees and plant seedlings and hope that something's going to change. We are, you know, we are two years away from a significant deadline in our air quality, and if we don't hit it, it's going to have economic impacts to businesses, and it's going to have health consequences for citizens. All of these things need to be taken into consideration. I know that fee and lieu is, has been helpful in some areas, but it should not be a dedicated revenue stream. We should be budgeting for what is needed to maintain parks, and we should be budgeting for our environmental issues and the strategies that will address it. And, you know, all of these things need to factor in together, and yes, I appreciate everyone's passion, and they're willing to go out and do this. They should not have had to do it, and we need to find better solutions.
Counsel Over, then Counsel Matt Guerrero.
Thank you, Mayor. Since, if my vote counting is correct, it looks like this is going to pass, and I thought I'd say a word about what's going to happen next. Since, since we'll pass it, City Council could then change it, or throw it away in six months. And so I don't think we're ever going to see any court cases, because I'm pretty sure this body will make some adjustments. Hopefully, they won't throw it all the way away. Hopefully, they'll keep some of the good parts of it in about six months. So I would expect that'll be the next thing that'll happen. Thank you.
Counsel Mayor Guerrero.
I'll keep this very brief, but as West Colfax continues to be brought up. I have lived, I, I just recently moved neighborhoods, but have lived within less than a half a mile of Colfax since 2014. I lived on a small, in a small condemned farmhouse that had been, that had become a duplex on like, a large lot, where I paid very little in rent, but it was, we had a duct taped window shut when I first moved to Lakewood, because I made less than $15,000 a year. That same exact place, almost 10 years later, I was able to move back into as an apartment building on the light rail. I just moved out of there a month ago. That apartment building has sidewalks and lighting, and zero escaping, and trees and bushes all the way around it, and it has a very large, well-maintained, green dog park with trees in the back, that the whole community can, can use. It's technically private property, but the neighbors all know it's there, and we all know each other. And there is also a rooftop area that includes places to sit and to gather. There is also an indoor area that includes places to sit and to gather. And that is actually the average of what has gotten developed in that part of town. So I just want to encourage folks to come look at it, that like, when we're looking at things like where the Alamo Drafthouse is in Denver, they do have different roles than us, we do have some buffer things, we do have some design things, and, and they have been actually relatively successful. So I think that there is, I just want to add to the conversation that there is a fear, and predominantly, we are hearing from residents of Lakewood that actually live where not a lot of this density exists, and it is reasonable to feel nervous that it will suddenly pop up, and it will be totally outside of your control, and it will ruin your neighborhood and your life and your park. Ward Two has experienced a huge amount of growth in the last 10 years, and it is definitely not ruining everything. It's not always perfect, but a lot of them are beautiful, a lot of them are mixed income, with everything from studio to three-bedroom. Most of them have some type of outdoor green space and benches at like, as like a very minimum. Most of them are along transit corridors, and they are replacing either things like I did live in, which was one house turned into a duplex where you duct taped the windows to keep snow out, or things that were industrial, or things that were abandoned, like the Sheridan and Tents Commercial Center that was referenced in one of the comments. And so I, I point all of that out to say that, like, once again, development does not, it, it is not tearing up what is already green space and turning it into Soviet-style Gulag housing, right? That is not what's happening in Lakewood, and I want to be really clear about that as well. And I just want to thank the community for a really incredible conversation that has come up on this topic today, and for the City Council and your leadership on this, and I hope that we can continue to figure out some solutions to balance these values.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and a second, I have no more hands raised, so with that, please go ahead and cast your vote. And again, the motion on the floor is passing the ordinance as is this evening. And that passes eight yeses, three nays, the nays being Over, Mayor Guerrero, and Cruz. So with that being the case, we actually, item 11 on the agenda is not one that we need to take up this evening, so we will pass on to that, and open, reopen non-agenda to public comment. So, Mr. Kratz, your time is here. No, you're good? None? Okay. Anybody else that wants to speak, public comment on something that was not on the agenda.
Hello, Counsel. I just wanted to come up and explain some of the reason that I come to these things and speak. As one of the 8,000, or 147,000 who didn't sign this petition, I just wanted to say that I want to make sure that you guys are all listening to all the people who aren't able to come to these meetings, who aren't able to complain, all the people who can't necessarily afford the time and the energy to become invested. I want you to make sure that they're not losing trust in you when you pass something that they didn't get any say in, right? And I wanted to say that as one of the 147,000 people who wasn't consulted in that, I would love to live in a Gulag-style house if I could afford it, and there was one, but there's not. There was one, the railside apartments, but all the studio apartments are already sold out, so I get to live with four roommates and a washer that squeaks. So I get to live with four roommates and a washer that squeaks all the time. And I love that, because I can afford it, and it's close to my house, or I mean, it's close to my work, and it's in a community that I love, that has parks. And I want to be able to share that with more people. And I, yeah, I think people aren't able to imagine a better place, and I can imagine a better place. And I do want that, and I want a place with trees and everything. But we can't all get everything that we want. And I just, I would hate to see everything stop. So I would, I just, I'm grateful that you guys listen, and I want to be one of the people, since I can afford to come, who can give an alternative voice than what so often and so frequently is said at these meetings. So thank you, and I'm grateful for the staff and all the work they're going to do to consult with best practices in regards to fees and lieu. I'm grateful for you guys for considering the legal implications. And I wish more people had faith in the systems that we have and had more trust, right? And I'm just grateful that I could be here tonight to be one of the few, and that I could afford to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thurmsgard. We have no items on general business tonight, so with that, we will shift on to counsel How about Ward One this evening?
Okay, thank you. I will allow some of my co-counselors, who are going to speak to the combined ward meeting that's coming up. I won't be in attendance, because I'll be attending the National League of Cities City Summit Conference. The city of Lakewood is being recognized with a milestone award for 50 years of membership. And the NLC has a mission to advocate for and protect the interest of cities, towns, and villages by influencing federal policy, strengthening local leadership, and driving innovative solutions. So really excited and honored to be able to join for that, and that recognition of that commitment to that collaborative experience. There's more than 2,700 municipalities across the U.S. that are involved in that. So that's it for me.
So I will speak to the combined ward meeting. It is scheduled for the 16th, Saturday, the 16th, at 1:30. And it's billed as a workshop kind of format. And that purpose is so that you can have feedback, and the topic will be dashboard items, which you can find on ClearPoint Strategies. If I get that, if I didn't get that right, Counselor Matt Guerrero will help me out on that. But I'll get the street right this time. So again, we'll meet the 16th, 1:30, and it'll be at 14th and Brentwood at Lakewood United Methodist. So workshop format, talking about our dashboard initiatives, and all in attendance will be able to participate in this. Thank you.
Board Two.
I can kick us off. Yes, we're looking forward to our now semi-annual combined ward meeting with Ward One. And also just wanted to celebrate the really successful Dia de Muertos event at 40 West that happened last Friday. Hopefully, folks were able to check that out in the district. There was a great parade, some really wonderful music, and I, I mean, you know, crying is something that comes pretty easily to me, but seeing some of the ofrendas and some of the ways that people were honoring some of their loved ones was really impactful. And so I felt grateful to have that in our community, in addition to all of the wonderful celebratory art across the district. And so I'm really grateful to 40 West and to all of the work that went into that, despite it being slightly cold out during that time. And the only other thing I wanted to highlight is, since there's a lot of interest in sustainability in the room, Sustentable Morse Park is having a composting event this week, on Thursday at 6:30 PM at the Clements Community Center, for interest in composting in Morse Park. So stay tuned for that.
Ward Three. Oh, sorry.
Ward 2.5. It's all good. I was actually going to say, I have nothing to add, so no report.
Ward Three.
There's an election tomorrow. Make sure you vote. Turn in those ballots. It's a pretty important election, so make sure you leave time to fill out the ballot if you haven't looked at it yet. There's a lot of important stuff on it at the national, state, and local level. There's, hopefully, my co-counselor can correct me if I get any of these dates wrong. We get a Belmar tree lighting coming up on Saturday, November 23rd, 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And we've got Lakewood Lights also in Ward Three at Heritage Belmar on Thursday, December 5th, Thursday, December 5th. I'm like 99% sure I got that right. Counselor Cruz says I got it right. Thursday, December 5th, 5:00 to 8:00. So hope to see you there. I actually think those, we will, both of those will be before the next in-person council meeting. So would love to see you at both of those, and hope everyone has a lovely Thanksgiving between now and then.
Did it, Counselor Lowe. And I'm proudly wearing my I Voted sticker, so please make sure that you vote by 7:00 PM tomorrow. If you are in line at the polling place by 7:00 PM, you can still vote. Ward Four.
Ward Four's fine. I think it was Saturday Night Live that used to have the bit called Deep Thoughts, and I think I might start using or doing that during the ward reports. One of the things that I've noticed lately is the hype around AI, artificial intelligence, reminds me a lot of the hype that was around voice recognition a few years ago. And just think how well voice recognition has gone on your phone, and when you're on a voice menu. And think about what AI is going to be in 10 to 20 years. It's going to be about the same.
Not sure I can top that off. The, just, the city of Lakewood's looking to develop a Lakewood Bike Plan. And if you go online to lakewood.org, you'll see that by November 17th, they're still looking for input on that bike plan. So please get involved, just as like, just like we had so many people here earlier tonight who were involved in this issue. The other piece is that the Red Rocks Community Art Students have an exhibit across the way. You can't get there now. Our agents back there might take offense if you try and get into a locked room, but do come here during regular public hours. And then there's, across the way in the gallery, there's also some really cool exhibits that I think sometimes people forget that we have some pretty amazing rising artists here in Lakewood. And so check them out and support them as much as you can. Last, we're not having a Ward Four meeting in November. I am still meeting with, for the informal coffees. Please email me if you'd like to do so, and talk about any of the issues you find important.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank all the residents who came out and voiced their concerns and their issues, and thank the council for all the robust discussion. And also want to mention the National League of Cities. I'm going to be sitting on the committee, the Finance Administration, Intergovernmental Affairs, Federal Action Committee, so that's a mouthful, but I just wanted to throw that out there. That should be interesting. I'll be out there next week as well. And just wanted to comment on that. And also just remind everyone to vote. We heard a lot of discussion about open space and land, and I think citizens have an opportunity to weigh in on if they want to fund those tomorrow. So, and obviously, all the people who have already voted through mail-in. So vote, and we'll see how things go tomorrow. Have a good one.
Just a shout-out to Ward Five in Southern Gables Neighborhood. They had an event where they had student volunteers come and rake leaves for elderly and disabled residents, bagged up all those leaves, and took them to Fleischer Family Farm for composting. So I'd like to encourage other neighborhoods to consider doing that type of thing, as well as, you know, next time we have a storm and branches start coming down, help out your neighbors. And we also have the leaf recycling coming up, the 16th through the 25th. And as Counselor Ryan mentioned last time, no branches. Also, if you have leftover pumpkins, you can call me, I'll come and pick them up. But there's plenty of places that are looking for them. They put them out for cows and pigs to consume, deer like them. I personally put them in my garden box for the squirrels to eat, and they've had a great time with it. So that's another option as well. And also, Dale, if you're listening, you left your hat at our last ward meeting. It's in Jacob's box.
He's listening.
All right. I also, I want to thank everybody for engaging on our topic this evening, whether you did so online, in person, by phone. Votes that we do up here. I can say for this council, I know a lot of thought, consideration, and research goes into the decisions that are made, and it's an honor to serve with all of you, and how seriously you take your job and listening to communities. So thank you to our council, too, for going through this very, very challenging topic this evening. It really does take a village to get it right. And I will be the first to stand up and say, we don't always get it right, but we are trying, and we are moving forward, you know, in any way that we can to find opportunities and create opportunities for improvement. I am going to add another note, in case you didn't know yet, tomorrow's Election Day, but I'm not going to ask you to vote, because I'm guessing most of you in this room already have, or watching online, probably likewise, already have. But I will ask that for those of you that have any young people in your life, this ballot is incredibly intimidating, even for somebody that has voted multiple times before. Encourage them, see how you can do, reach out, and see how you might be able to help them come to these decisions. Very important, we need our young people. We need the voices of our young people. So that, and on the other side of things, you know, the upside of a mail-in ballot is you can do it at your sofa. The downside, especially once we pass the last day to mail, is it may be challenging to get it to the ballot box. So if you also know an older adult that may have challenges getting their ballot in, please reach out, see how you might be able to assist. We are allowed by law to take in more than our own, not more than 10, but we can help other neighbors vote as well. So a plug on that. We won't be here next week for Veterans Day, so one more time, thank you, everybody in their community that has served. And can't say, I can't say enough about that. So thank you, all of you that have served and sacrificed in different ways, many different ways in your lives, and the families that were impacted by that. We have a couple or a few topics that are coming up that are pretty important for many of our community members, so I want to make sure that this is on the radar for anyone that wants to tune into these particular topics. On November 18th, we will be back here for a study session. We will be virtual for a study session that will be split-topic update of extreme weather sheltering. So what is the city of Lakewood doing? What are some of our Jefferson County partners doing to address having roofs overheads of our unhoused during extreme weather events? So we'll get an update on that. We'll separately have an update on sustainability, efforts that we have been doing in the city that is a goal of city councils to improve the work that we are doing there. And a big part of that is having a pulse on where we are so that we know how to move forward. December 2nd, we will also be taking up the topic of Safe Streets, Vision Zero. That is one we hear a lot about, is how do we make our streets safer? So tune in. Again, that's a virtual study session, so you can sit back at the old sofa and watch us from there. And with that, we have no further business this evening, so I will go ahead and adjourn us. Good evening.